Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Thursday, October 23rd. At this time, I'd like to call upon everyone so that we can stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. Thank you. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media. I'd also kindly ask that if anyone has a cellphone, that they would either turn that device off or mute it. Moving forward to further announcements, the next meeting of the Board of Appeals will be scheduled for, is scheduled for, October 30th, 2025, here at the Town Hall.
Is it at five, Mr. Chair?
I don't have a time. I believe, I don't think we have any other business. I believe it's specifically for the other 40B project. I believe the 40B project on the Sherbrick Farm on O Westport Road. I believe that's on for six o'clock, but we will clarify that when Michelle gets back. Gentlemen, with your consent, I'd like to move forward today for tonight's public hearing out of order. The first matter is a matter that I must recuse myself on, but I'd like to take care of some of the other business that we have. Are you okay with that, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay. So, the matter we have, the first matter is a variance case ZAV 25-4. It was continued from September 10th, 2025. The petitioner is Dion Colletta and also the owner. The subject property is 25 Thatcher Street and it's known as map 122 lot 91-1. The petitioner is seeking a variance to reduce the setbacks from 20 feet to zero to construct an outdoor deck/kitchen grill area in the rear of the house to the property line. He's seeking relief on the Article 375-10.4 D1B development standards. I recently just saw, I don't know if she gave it to someone else, Michelle had, the petitioner in this case has actually communicated with our secretary, Ms. Michelle Viera, and he has requested a continuance. He was unable to be here this evening as a result of some family obligation. I think that was the explanation. He's already signed an extension. He's already signed an extension beforehand. I don't know how the members feel, but I'm willing to entertain any comments that anyone has, either to grant or not grant a continuance of this matter.
I have no problem granting him a continuance.
Same, Mr. Chair. I don't think, I think we should give him one last chance, I think.
All right. I just want to make sure I take a look at the request for the continuance. It was, Mr. Colletta, do you have that document?
I do.
So, it also seems that he's done some sort of remedial measure in an attempt to come before us. I don't know whether or not that will be sufficient, but that's obviously something we'll discuss the next time he comes before us. So, if we were to continue this matter, when's our next open date for this? And we could do it as a five o'clock hearing.
Yeah, I think we've decided that we're going to move forward with the Friday.
The fives. So, this, the hearing that's actually for the 30th of October, is that going to be the 40B matter only, or do we have some other local matters on?
I think we have one other one.
We have one other one. So, we'll have the hearing at five o'clock.
Correct.
So, the hearing on Thursday, for the members at home and everyone here in the audience, our next scheduled meeting is October 30th at five o'clock, and there will also be a six o'clock hearing on the 40B matter for Sherbrick Farms. Okay. So, we've clarified that.
Where do you want to put this one?
Well, that's one thing we need to do before we entertain a motion to continue it.
If you're...
We're going to find something that's amenable with the members, and we can push him out. He could have been a little more responsive on this.
We've already agreed on November 6th and November 13th.
Okay. So, you want to put it on for the 13th at five o'clock?
Did you want me to contact him and tell him he has some other plans?
Yeah, you could do that in the interim. You could do that. We wanted something that was more specific than just that, okay?
Mr. Chair, we only have one case for October 30th before the 40B.
Right.
So, we have an hour between five and six.
What is the first, is it a complicated matter?
Well, it's 411 Fons Corner Road. They want to bring in a convenience store and a gas station.
Oh, that seems complicated. That seems complicated. 411 Fons Corner Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay. Fair enough. I revert back to the November 13th if that's, does that work for you, Attorney Human?
Yes, it does.
Also, the 6th, right, you want to finish that up? The 6th, if you have cases, and then the 13th, correct?
The 6th and the 13th, yeah.
November, right.
Yep. But right now, we're putting this one on for the 13th.
Correct.
All right. I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
Is this for five o'clock or six o'clock?
This is for five o'clock.
Okay.
I make a motion that we continue variance ZAV 25-4 to the November 13th meeting at five o'clock.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. I believe there's a person in the audience, they've heard, we're on for November 13th at five o'clock.
Thank you.
Great. Now, moving on to the administrative portion of tonight's meeting, I'd like to get that out of the way as well, gentlemen. First matter we have is review and approval of administrative minutes of September 25th, 2025. I don't have any comments, gentlemen.
I have no comments.
Just a minor comment, nothing really. I'll just give it to Michelle.
That's fine. Gentlemen?
I have no.
No, thank you. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of September 25th, 2025, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Moving on to the next matter, which is review and approval of comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-1, minutes of September 25th, 2025, for 970 Tucker Road.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments.
I have one comment that I will just mark here. I'll have you just take a look at that. Gentlemen, any comments?
I have none.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion... Go ahead. Go ahead. I make a motion that we approve the minutes for comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-1 for September 25, 2025.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is review and approval of comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-2, minutes of September 25th, 2025, 498 O Westport Road. Excuse me?
We're going to have to defer them.
We'll defer those?
Yeah.
We're going to defer those, gentlemen, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
All righty. So, now that leaves us to the only matter that we have for the five o'clock session. I will publicly announce that I have to recuse myself of this matter because I do have a conflict, and as a result, we're going to have to reconvene, and my colleague here, Mr. Schuber, will serve as the acting chair. All right. I'll take a little recess.
A few minutes, Chair. The zoning board of appeals back in session. The next matter on tonight's agenda, we have several cases, actually, they're all for the same property. So, one is a special permit and two variances. I will read each one separately with the description of each case, and then we can open the cases all together, as we've done in the past, and then later on, when we vote, we vote on each case separately. The next, the next case is a special permit ZSP-25-5. The petitioner applicant is Kevin Maderas, and the owner is Lewis Property LLC. Subject property is located at Zero State Road map, 163 lot 31, 32, and 35. The property is located in the general business district. This case was legally advertised in the Chronicle on September 4th, 2025, and September 11th, 2025. What's the pleasure of the board on waiving the reading of the butters list?
I make a motion, we waive the reading of the butters list.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we do have a copy of the butters list. It's available at the ZBA office. If anyone wishes to look at the list, they can contact Michelle, and she'll make it available. So, we have the, the petitioner seeking a special permit for lot coverage of 91,167 square feet, which exceeds the 2,500 square feet allowed in the Aquifer III district, and this is per Article 28, Section 375-28.58, prohibited uses. This is the first application for this, the special permit for this property. The second application is a use variance, ZAV-25-8, and again, the petitioner applicant is Kevin Maderas, is the same owner, Lewis Property LLC. The same property is located Zero State Road, map 163, lot 31, 32, and 35, and in general business. Also, this case was advertised on September 4th, 2025, and September 11th, 2025. The, this case, the butters list is available. If anybody wishes to look at the butters list, it's at the ZBA office. This, the petitioner is seeking a use variance to construct a 56-unit, high-quality residential apartment building on a 270,153-square-foot lot. This is per Article 18, Section 375-18.2, allowed uses. The property is located at Zero State Road, as I indicated, and also in the general business zoning district and the Aquifer III district. The last case for this property is also a variance. It's variance ZAV-25-9, same property owner, same petitioner, same, this property, this case was advertised on September 4th, 2025, and September 11th, 2025. Again, we do have the butters list available at the ZBA office if anybody wishes to look at the list. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a variance for height, per Article 18, Section 375-18.4, development standards and lot size. Article 30, Section 375, point 30, point 3 limited business and general business district. The proposal is to construct 56-unit, high-quality residential apartments on a 270,153-square-foot lot. So, just to summarize, the applicant is proposing to construct 56 high-quality residential apartment buildings on this property, and he's asking for a couple of variances and a special permit. The special permit has to do with the lot coverage because we're in an Aquifer III overlay district, and anything over 2,500 square feet of impervious surface would require a special permit from the zoning board. Also, we're looking at use variance because residential use of, residential dwelling is not allowed in the general business district, and also, we're looking for another dimensional relief on the height of the building. The maximum allowable height in the general business district is 35 feet, and I believe the structure is going to be 45 feet in height. Before we open to the public, normally, we give the applicant the chance to present the case. They would present the case, then I would ask the board members if they have any questions. We'll, I will read the...
Dr. Agai, let's recuse.
Okay. Just for the record, also, Dr. Agai, who is an alternate member, who is not sitting on, on the, on the voting of this case, would like to make it clear, or make it into the pub, to the public, that he would recuse himself from participating in the discussions or making any comments on this case. Before we open, before we ask the applicant for his presentation, as, and as I mentioned before, you'll have a chance tonight to voice your opinion, whether you're in favor or you're in opposition of this case. After we hear the applicant's presentation and we ask the board for their opinion, we can open it to the public. Before we do that, I do have a couple of comments or letters from the different departments within the town that I would like to read into the record. The first one would be from the building commissioner, and basically, prior to applying for, to the zoning board of appeal, the applicant is required to file with the, with the building department for a building permit, and then the building commissioner would look at the application, and in his purview, this is over his jurisdiction because he cannot issue a building permit for the application, and because for several reasons, and that's why he would send a letter to the zoning board explaining that the applicant needs either a special permit or variances from the zoning bylaws for the proposed development. So, basically, the building commissioner said you need a use variance because you're proposing to construct residential units in the general business district, so this is a variance, and also, you need the special permit, as I mentioned before, for the lot coverage in the Aquifer III overlay district, and also, you need the relief on, dimensional relief on, on the height of the building and the size of the lot. Also, I had, we had a couple of comments from conservation. There's some wetlands in the back, and they need to, and this is normal, this is the normal procedure. Anytime you have a wetland within your property or within 100 feet, you will have to file with conservation if there's any requirement filing, such as notice of intent, whatever filing needs to be with conservation and DEP, the applicant will have to comply with. Also, we had a couple of comments from DPW regarding the sewer and the water systems in town, and they saying, because these 56 units, the proposed, they're concerned about the capacity of the existing water system and the existing sewer system, they would like to hire a peer review to review the, the application and to review the plans submitted by the applicant to make sure we have the capacity, and if they have the capacity, they would allow the, the applicant to tie to the municipal sewer and the municipal water system per the Dartmouth DPW requirements. If there's issue with the capacity, there would be some kind of off-site mitigation that the applicant could do, and it has to be at his own expense to make sure that we have the capacity of the system. And again, the peer review would be the responsibility of the applicant. He would have to pay for the consultant. It's at no expense to the town. At this time, I would ask the applicant's representative if they can come up to the podium and present the case, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, John Markey Jr. from the offices of Markey and Walsh in New Bedford, and I have the privilege of representing Kevin Maderas today. I don't think that Mr. Human and Mr. Farrier were on the board at the time that I used to bring my law school students into this room. But when I taught municipal law, I brought them in here because I thought that, you know, the chairman and the folks who were running this organization about 10 years ago gave a great example of hearing from the community and trying to do what's right and realizing that I was encouraging them to volunteer and sit in your seats and sometimes make difficult decisions or try to build consensus, so. But I also told those law students, there's three great things about being a lawyer. One, you can represent a person that you respect, that you like, and that tries to do the right thing. The second thing is you can figure out what the law is, and when it's right and sound, use that law to promote things that move forward. And the third thing is, is to make the community that you live in a better place. And I think this is a project that does that. But now that we've met tonight, and we're going to hear, I expect, from some other folks who have different opinions, rule 3A is, if you really want to do a good project, you need to listen to folks, and you need to see if there's a way to build consensus and get to the right answer for everybody. I know that my client reached out to these folks, and they all got letters, which is probably why they're here. He has spoken to some people who approached him and talked to them about the project. Some people, tonight's the first time we've met them. So, just to start with, I do not, I'm not going to be asking for a vote tonight because this is the first time we've heard from some people, and there might be things we can do to accommodate them. There may be some things we can't accommodate, but I want to hear what they have to say, and we would ask that we not have a vote tonight because I want to hear from people. So, with that introduction, I would like to walk through with what I would have been presenting if nobody had any questions.
Attorney Markey, if you don't mind, I think there's a couple of comments I would like to make before you start your presentation because I think they're appropriate to make them out. So, just so, I have here a list of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 butters that are in support of this project, that they submitted their signature with the names and the addresses, and it's, with the permission of the board members, I would ask that we can vote to take this into, into, to, into the record as...
I make a motion that we put into the record the form showing six butters who are in favor of this 56-unit apartment building.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, this is part of the records now, it's available. And also, before we move to the presentation, I, I did, we, we do have a couple of comments from planning department that this is a, a A&R plan application will be required for this project, which you're aware of.
Yes.
Because you're changing the lot lines, I think, you know. And it's subject to the site plan review by the Dartmouth Planning Board, also conservation, I think.
Concom, as well.
Right. I mentioned that, you know, so. And DPW, the same standards, look, you know, stormwater and trench and sewer, all the sewer and the water work within, within the, for the sewer and water system has to be in compliance with the specs of DPW, so.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And just to translate that to folks, my client knows that tonight, and when we come together in this group next time, isn't the last time that public can have comment. If we get the permission that we're seeking tonight, there's a process in front of the planning board that will discuss things such as the way in which the traffic flows, the way in which lighting is set up, et cetera. And so, there are additional processes, and as we talked, the Conservation Commission will talk about not impacting the wetlands in an adverse manner. So, when you choose to, to proceed in this manner to make progress, my client knows that this is not a one-and-done or a one-night stand. This is a process by which we work through things. But to walk through this all, starting with, with what we're looking at, this is the plan that, for those of you who have seen it before, you may be aware of it because it was publicly available at Town Hall, and I'm just going to walk over to this, and if, if the microphone doesn't work, I apologize. Right now, the control is of multiple lots that have the potential to have buildings on them on Route 6, and they go back into a wooded area, and it's 802 to 808 State Road. There have been some businesses and buildings in the front part of the lot that are no longer there, that we're trying to seek to see if there's a way to make some improvements. This is the general area, and you can see that it's a large wooded area in the back, and Route 6, all of us in the, you know, greater Dartmouth area are familiar with, with the area generally and everything that began with the mall when I was a kid, and then became BJ's and, and the other, you know, Home Depot when my kids were kids, and Applebee's thereafter. Thanks. And so, ultimately, this is the area where they're looking to do the project. Just to give you a flavor of what, coming off of Route 6, this is about a 45-second video that will show what we hope the building to look back. It's about 350 to 400 feet off of Route 6, set in the back. If you look at it, the way the topography goes, this will be a three-story building in the front when you're facing Route 6, and as you get to the back of the building, because it's a 10-foot drop-off, as you get to the back of the lot, there'll be four, four floors in the back. Obviously, it's the same flat roof at the top, but basically, because of the topography, it'll be three stories on one side and four on the other, which many of you may be familiar with when you have someone who has, you know, a walkout basement, basically. You notice the two, the three elevator shafts, because you have to have ADA compliance, even though the building will only be 31 feet at the roof line, when you add in the elevator shaft, that's an extra eight feet. So, you'll, well, I'll get around to this, but that's the reason that there's a request for some height relief, and then now, this will just be backing yourselves out toward Route 6. Now, the chairman already spoke of this, but there are basically three requests that we have before this board, two of them that overlap with one another. The first is a use variance. The board is familiar with this, but I just want to let the folks in the audience be aware of this, that the town creates zones where certain things are permitted. In this zone, what might be permitted, as of right, without coming before them, would be a motel. The Capri motel, you've got the motels in Dartmouth that have had good, good histories and bad histories. You know, certainly, the Hampton Inn out on Fons Corner Road, you know, I have business people who come in and stay there. The Capri motel of my client who does criminal defenses had other things happen there. But the reality is, this wasn't designed, and this was designed to allow a use, that's one of the uses. These folks will be meeting at six o'clock for 40Bs. It's not a permitted use, but it's something which can sometimes be aggressive, depending on the developer. We're proposing a use here that is not in the book, but we believe is a good use, and this board has the ability, if they think it's a good use for the town and for the community and for the neighborhood, to say that it's possible. And I think in your commu, in your area, a residential use is, is a use, and my client believes that. The next, number two and number four fit into the other variance, which is height, and I'll get into that again quickly, but basically, we're talking about what's the height of a building. In Dartmouth, in this area, you'd be allowed to have a building 35 feet high. Even in a residence, you'd be allowed to have it 30 feet high in a single family. Here, we propose the roof line in the front to be 31 feet, but because we have the elevator requirement, it technically goes up to 39 feet in the front, and in the back, it will be 40 feet at the baseline, and it would get up to 48 feet because of the, the lay of the land. The third request is going to relate to the Aquifer District, which is a large area of Dartmouth, which they want to allow water to seep back into the, into the Aquifer system. But if you look at everything from the mall all the way up, this is something which is not atypically considered by the town if you're doing things like my client's proposing to recharge the water system, to try to contribute to it, and balance that out with increasing the tax base, with increasing to have an affordable but high-quality rental unit for your children that may have grown up in Dartmouth. It's something which they have granted relief in the past. And the final one is, is the lot size based upon the number of units. So, I'd like to walk through each of them one at a time for the board and for the members of the public. The first is, in Article 18, Section 35, within any general business district, no building or premises can be used without a certain list of uses. That list of uses would be things like a Walmart, a motel, a Dunkin' Donuts, whatever it might be that is a commercial use, including a motel, including other types of, of uses. Technically, residences are not permitted. I can explain to you that this particular developer, my client, was able to develop a 28-unit, successfully develop a 28-unit apartment building that abuts Dick's Sporting Goods. He worked well with the neighbors across the street on Fenton Street to minimize the view impact for them, and that's a place where there are now 28 young people, or, you know, I'm 61, so they all seem young to me, but relatively young people can afford to live in Dartmouth, and, or if it's an older person who wants to live in Dartmouth, they will be able to walk to the stores that are in the area. We're proposing and thinking that in this area of Dartmouth as well, as Dartmouth has grown, along this road toward Westport, there's a balance between the commercial and the residential, and because, as I'll talk about, the, the rock and the ledge that are in the front of the, of the lot, it makes sense to do something more in the back, and it's not a logical thing to put a large business like a BJ's or something else in the back that doesn't have visibility, or a motel in the back that doesn't have visibility on the street. It makes more sense to do what was done in the project up off of Cross Road, which is to do a residence. Again, showing you this area, here is a small image of it that is from Google, the Google Street View from across. You see there's a commercial operation on the left and a commercial operation on the right. You see... You see what appears to be a small rock in the middle. But this morning, well, you see now the engineering pointing about, and one of the things that I'm required to prove to this board is that this lot is unique. And if you take a look at the lot to the left and the lot to the right, they are able to have a gas station on the left and dig in without having major issues with the ledge, which is far enough down at that point. But in our lot, the ledge is above ground at certain points, it's right below ground at other points. So if you see this area I highlight, it highlights what the engineers talk about as elevation, like how high is the ground and how high is it that there's ledge. That area of this large lot is very ledge-specific, which I understand now for hearing from a few folks just tonight, is a concern about how the project is going to go forward and what's going to be involved in constructing around the ledge. But I want you all to hear that one of the reasons that the building is set back is we want to avoid as much ledge work, selfishly because it's less expensive, but also neighborhood-wise, realizing the less blasting and the less hammering that goes on, the better for everybody. So just to highlight the ledge, and because it was a nice day out today, you get a picture of me. I went out there this morning and took a picture, and this is my, you know, 11-year-old car, Honda, I recommend it, it lasts a long time. But you can see how high this ledge is, and you can see my way there and how high this goes. So the reality is, at some points, this ledge is 15 or 20 feet above ground. We are going around that to get into the back portion, but there will still be, to lay the road out and to do some of the work, there's going to be some work around the ledge. But the point I'm making to the board is, one of the things I need to establish is that there is something unique about this particular lot, and I believe that there is when you look at the ledge. The chairman mentioned this earlier, but there was submitted some people who were immediately abutting on Route 6 and some people across who were on Reed Road, obviously not everybody, but these are the folks who did respond when we reached out and signed off on this as the idea that an improvement or development is a good thing. The second request for relief, so that, the first one was used, the second request for relief is height. And we acknowledge the, you know, the height, the appropriate height is 35 feet, under the rules. The whole reason that this board exists is there is an ability, if it's the right project and if it's required and if it makes sense with these unique circumstances, to have flexibility and to speak to the community and talk about it. So in this particular case, these are the images of what the height would be. In the front, you have three stories. It is 31 feet, which is four feet below the ledge, if you look at the roof line. But I acknowledge, a little rendering of the top of the elevator shaft, these three little buckets are going to go eight feet above that, so there'll be 39 feet, which is four feet above. And if you go around to the back, it's 40 feet at the baseline, and it will be 48 feet. Different towns have different rules about, do you take the average, do you take it from the middle? The lay of the land is, this side is a foot different than that side, the front is 10 feet different from the back. The bottom line is, we wanted to be candid with everybody and say, this is a project which is not consistently, all the way around, going to be under 35 feet. The reason that you need to have the height is that with this unique, you know, it's not necess, the ledge is unique, but with the topography in that area of town, it doesn't make sense to bring all this fill in the backside of the building, and it's more affordable to build it. And to have somebody make improvements, there has to be a balance of what makes sense and what you can afford to do financially. So the front half of the building will be three stories high, and there will be underneath that just basement and electrical things. In the backside, there will be some walkout units on the fourth floor, just like I said, many people have a ranch that has a walkout basement in the back. And then here's, again, a rendering of the front and a rendering of the back parking lot, and the difference between the third and fourth floors. The next is the Aquifer District. This is a lot that does not presently do a lot to funnel water into the Aquifer based upon all the ledge that covers much of the lot. And therefore, and it's on the edges of the Aquifer area, so what we've done is we've acknowledged the fact that 25 square feet for a unit.
Attorney Markie, if you don't mind, if you can stay close to the microphone because they can't pick it up on the back, so it's being recorded, so, thank you.
I got it. I've taken, been married for 35 years. So the recharge for the roof runoff is something that my client has chosen to do, which is an additional expense. When he constructs the building, if he's given permission, what he is going to do is instead of having that runoff, he will capture through the drainage system that goes from the roof into the gutters, down into what's called a recharge area, that will allow the Aquifer to get funneled clean water down in over time, to reduce the amount of lot coverage from 33% of the lot approximately to 27%. And so impervious is the material that doesn't allow water to seep through, and we're trying to keep that impervious material as small as possible to allow the Aquifer to be serviced. And my understanding, looking at prior decisions of this board, is that there is precedent for even greater reductions, you know, in the 40% range of coverage at times, if it's a good project and if there are unique conditions in the lot. So we think that this is something that makes sense, and it's a good faith effort by my client to minimize any adverse impact. The next section is the request for zoning relief on lot coverage. In a section of this, it talks about 7,500 square feet per housekeeping unit and 1,250 square feet per lodge. This is a strange, anachronistic bylaw to my experience. We dealt with it the last time my client did a project, and in that instance, the board was good enough to grant this relief, and it's relief that made sense when you had a large lot that was proposing to do an apartment building. And then this, we think that the fact that the building is set back 300 feet from State Road will, and it's six acres in size, will be evidence that it's, it is a good project. And then finally, I just, I come back to what I did at the beginning of this presentation. I had the privilege of representing Kevin Maderas five years ago in a similar project off of Route 6, off of Cross Road, that he developed it with high-quality materials. This board granted the relief that is very similar to the relief that is requested, and it's a project that has created a home for a number of people who are, who have chosen to want to stay and live in Dartmouth in a high-quality but affordable place to live. So we think with a proven concept and a positive track record of the developer, it's something that, you know, this board should consider strongly. And, you know, I invite questions from, and I look forward to hearing what they say. But again, as I said, the folks who came here tonight and we've heard from them the first time, I'd like to hear what their thoughts are, and we would like to, to the extent possible, make sure the project, as it proceeds with conditions that you might place, are thoughtful of their requests. So I'm happy to keep whatever you would like on the screen, maybe just the first image to show where the project is, and then to answer your questions and allow folks to come up.
Thank you, Attorney Markie. Before we open this to the public, I'd like to open it to the board members. Is there any questions from the board members at this time for the applicant?
I don't have any at this time.
I have one. Attorney Markie, you, when you were talking about lot size, in your dimensional variance submission, you suggested that you complied with a lot size under Section 18.4A and 30.4, or am I reading it wrong?
I believe that there are, you are reading it correctly. When I was last before this board on the project, there were two conflicting zoning bylaws. For tonight's purposes, I just want to deal with the most restrictive one to make sure that I get the variance requested and there's not a question about it, if that's acceptable.
Answered my question, because that's what I thought would be the most appropriate part of any decision if we find in your favor.
Any more questions? No. I do have a few questions, but I will refrain until after I hear from the public, so, thank you, Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight for this case, the three, actually, the three cases, the special permit and the two variances that would like to come to the podium, either in support or in opposition to this? We would like to hear from you.
Mr. Chairman, one quick question. Should I leave this here and they speak from here, or should I take this down?
No, they have to come to the podium because...
I knew there was two podiums, I'm just kidding.
Oh, yeah, they can stay there, yeah.
Okay, that way I can just leave this here.
Exactly, thank you.
Okay.
Well, you need to come to the podium and state your name and address, please, for the record.
For the record, Michael Gilmet, 527 Reed Road. I'm a abutter to this property, a very large abutter of the property. I would like to, first of all, bring up a couple of those drawings and pictures that they had on the screen done by Google. Could you bring up the one that has the overhaul just like that with all the trees, that one?
Any, please, any questions you have, you can direct it at the chairman's room.
I just, I had to see it.
Yeah, I, I...
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, first of all, we don't know the date of that, of that picture, because all those trees in there were destroyed, okay, a couple of years ago. And ever since those trees have been destroyed, all the water has been going into my property and flooding it, okay? Every time there's a major storm, okay, because of the ledge, they destroyed trees that had trunks probably around three feet in diameter. There was a beech nut tree in there that they just cut it right down. Now, it's not their fault, okay, it's previous owners. But ever since then, we've been having water problems in our area. As far as the drawings, I mean, the pictures on there, there are a couple of them that are wrong. They're the wrong side of the street that they're showing, those pictures. If you can bring up Route 6, there's a couple of them further on.
By the little straw.
Keep on going, keep on going, keep on going. That one. They're on the wrong side of the, wrong side of the road, they're showing the wrong side of the picture.
Quiet, please.
That's between Lincoln Park and the gas station.
Me, you can't, you need to come to the podium to speak, thank you.
Okay, that is a wrong picture, so it's, that's deceptive, okay? They should have did their homework in having that done, okay? That right there is telling the public that we know everything and we got everything under control. That ledge, I know what that ledge is, okay? I know what's in back of it, okay? Because I used to live there for years and years, and we used to go with our animals in back there. It is not suitable for that type. They can say they did soil tests. I gave you an example, the restaurant down the street from there, the cast and pig.
And pigs, yeah.
Yeah. When they board, they board every once in a while, they say, oh, yeah, you can put a 15-foot basement in there. They hit ledge. It may be all right here, but right here, you're going to hit ledge. So if they did board tests, they'd make sure they did it every four feet. So as far as that's concerned, I don't trust wherever they place it in there, okay? If they stop blasting, I got a cinder block basement.
Basement, yeah, we understand.
We have a couple of them that have rocks as far as basement. In fact, my next-door neighbor has rocks, and the house is fairly old. All you need is a good shiver, loosen up those rocks, you lost the foundation. As far as everything else in there, they show a nice picture of it going straight in. That's not, that's not a correct way of showing it. It has to be true to life. It's going to go over, around, and everything else. The layout of the plan, the parking lot, I'm sure the lawyer brought it up, that they're going to rearrange lighting so it doesn't show. It doesn't work with a car. You can have lights, you know, in the parking lot, and that's 20 feet above the height, because it's on a ledge. Those lights are going to come in, right into our bedroom.
Well, Ms., Mike, they have to go through a site plan review, this will, you know, if they pass this board, trust me, they'll have to go through a site plan review where all the lighting and all the, you know, this will be covered. But at this time, I assume you're not in support of this project, so is there other concerns besides what you're talking about right now?
Right now, the height.
The height of the building is...
I mean, it's a castle.
Okay.
I've seen the one, no, right next to the Target, and as far as being a luxury, that's not luxury. I have a place in Connecticut, a luxury, I don't see a swimming pool there, okay? I probably won't see a swimming pool there. I don't see retention ponds because it's all swamp there, okay? There's no room for him to put his highly-designed water-retention pot in there, because it's ledge.
Well, that's part of the requirements before they do any, this is going to be part of the requirements, they have to do test pits and make sure they have the waters, the desuppuration from the groundwater and all that, you know, whatever the perk that they need to...
See Lincoln Park? That was originally supposed to be all houses. They put nothing for retention. Those retention ponds had to be put in.
And as far as stormwater, you're concerned about the flooding, that would have to maintain zero net acreage from the development.
Right now, everything is coming off their property.
So they can't send runoff to your property. So you understand that, with the design, all the runoff will have to stay on site.
Has to stay on that property.
Okay, so I just want to make sure you understand that, you know, it's not, okay.
All right.
Great, great, thank you.
Good luck with getting the sewage over there, too.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's definitely, it's a challenging site, but let's see, you know, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name...
One at a time, or are you together?
We're together.
We're together.
Don and Karen Ferry live on 531 Reed Road, neighbors to Mike, and our property butts up to Mike's, which butts up to that. My main concern is the amount of ledge and what it's going to take to drill or blast, because like Mike said, we do have a very old home with a very old foundation, and I worry about vibrations and cracks.
The integrity of our home, the privacy, having 100 people coming staring at you in your backyard.
You have a development on Route 6 now that's not complete with, I don't know how many houses on the Westport side. When that's up and running, and this one, if it came to be, the amount of traffic, which would end up meaning that you're going to have to widen Reed Road and take a piece of my frontage.
Okay.
Yeah, and just the traffic alone, trying to get out of my driveway now, even before the holiday season, thinking that another possibility of 100 or 150 cars on Reed Road daily is astronomical, I just can't handle it.
The noise, the dust.
The traffic.
The traffic.
The privacy, just the integrity of my home. I have, my home was built in the 1900s, so that stone foundation...
Right, I mean, prior to...
It's my nightmare, too, so I'll never sleep again.
Right, no, I mean, prior to construction, they will have to do a pre-survey of all the foundations around the area normally before you blast or use mechanical excavators.
And if it goes forward and then something's damaged on my home...
Monitor, make sure there's no damage.
Where's the liability when damage does come?
Well, I think that would be part of the, probably with the conditions that we can put on the permit, so...
And the wildlife, too. I mean, we have a ton of wildlife back there.
Right, no, we understand, you know, that's why we have those, these public hearings. I know the area, I, trust me, I drive by there every day, I live off of Reed Road to the back, you know, so I drive by that site every day, and I know it's...
You should really take a photo of the backside of that ledge that the gentleman showed a picture of, because that would really show you the size of that rock, which, if you have 20 feet sticking up, it could be 100 feet down. the size of that rock, which if you have 20 feet sticking up, it could be 100 feet down.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi there, Abigail Erwin. I'm here with my grandmother Diane. We live at 539 Reed Road. It's also going to abut the property. I have some concerns that kind of echo my neighbor's concerns as well about traffic, about privacy. It might potentially come right up to our property. So, I am a little worried about lights and things. And our driveway is also considered, you know, not a causeway, but a right-of-way. And there was some kind of talk about using that possibly as kind of another entrance. I'm not in support of that. Me and my two other neighbors, two closer to Reed Road, the three of us use that roadway. And I think that it would kind of cause quite a bit of traffic going up to Reed Road from that kind of backside entrance. I also have concerns about the conservation aspect and the wildlife in the area. There is quite a bit of marshland on our property that I would be concerned about kind of keeping the integrity of that going. That's kind of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
Hello, Laura Lamboullia, 209 North Quarry Street.
I'm sorry, 209 what street?
North Quarry.
North Quarry.
We're on North Quarry Street. We have, there's only two residents there and we both have well water. We are worried about, you know, the aquifer, you know, the veins drying up and wells drying up. We also, we are directly across the street from part of that ledge on the right-hand side of his property. And, you know, that building going way up there is gonna overlook our property. We like our privacy and we're concerned about that. We're concerned about, this is my daughter Christine, she lives with me. And she's helping me tonight.
I would like to speak, I have many notes prepared. When Attorney Markey said that the project is right and sound, it's not right and sound yet. I have many concerns. As my mother had said, so we live on North Quarry and we are very downstream from this project. So, if, if we can get the close-up view again of the little red circle that was oval? Okay, so that little gray dot to the right? No, no, sorry. That doesn't look like the one that I saw before.
No.
Well, that isn't the right one, but that's okay. Where the Cask and Pig is, where that restaurant is, I am to the left of that, right near the red oval.
Yes, it's Souza, Souza Iron Works is there. And then we have Brum on one side. So, we're directly in back of Souza, fencing there. And so, we're worried about, you know, runoff and what about, you know, snow and ice removal and all, you know? They use all the material that goes into the ground. We're worried about that.
I was just specifically worried about how the project is so high. So, yes, we can talk about privacy, there's definitely that. And there's definitely lighting that is probably gonna be addressed further down the line. But overall, our biggest concern here is the well. The whole North Quarry Street is all on wells where none of them are on... So, we're just very concerned about that because overall, it's gonna continuously go down, just gravity in itself is gonna just bring it right down.
Lighting and lighting and also lighting because where that building is and where lighting is, it's gonna come directly to our property. And also...
The rock blast. If there is any rock blast, we're in the same boat as many of our neighbors. We have, it was round about 1909 that our house was built. And I personally stay at home and homeschool my daughter. So, I'm not gonna have a rock blast take out my house and potentially kill me and my daughter. That would be terrible. Don't think that'd be good publicity for this project. So, our home will not sustain this at all. We also have, you know, rock in our basement, you know, and just the integrity, the sheer integrity of our home and how close this project is. Because, like I said, we're very, very close to this project. We're unique from some of the other neighbors just because we're located right on North Quarry and we're down. We're down, the project is up high. And North Quarry in and of itself, the road says it all, North Quarry, is all kinds of quarries all around there.
All around.
So, we don't know, you know? Let me get back to my notes.
All right, we're almost done.
Confused.
What's that?
Try one at a time.
Sorry.
Okay, then, well, you can go, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've never done this before.
I just think that the variance request specifically for the aquifer is way, way over the limit, the legal limits, I think that's pretty insane to request that much from the town. I think that this project should either run in its limits all by itself or not run at all because there's too much at stake. Every single, this property is surrounded by neighbors so I don't know how their runoff system can't go into a neighbor's property. How can it not? So, I'll need more information on that for sure. And that's it, basically, just the privacy, the dumpster. There's two dumpsters on the property and one dumpster is right at the edge of where it's going to go right down. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Julia Ross-Golin and I live on 4 Woodcart Path in Dartmouth. And one of the things that concerns me besides...
I'm sorry, what's your, Julia?
4 Woodcart Path. I'm right behind where they are, okay? One of the things that concerns me is everybody kinda is, the integrity of the house, if they're gonna blast things, right? It's all well and good to say, we're gonna figure it out, engineering, da-da-da. And then five years down the road, 10 years down the road, some blast, some movement that was done by this now is causing a problem. Who's gonna take care of that? I worry about the homeowners because they're not gonna have any recourse because I know what the town's gonna say or anyone else. Well, it's five years down the road. You don't know for sure. You can guesstimate, you can do the best of your ability, but you could ruin people's homes. The other thing is the traffic is insane now on Reed Road. When we try to come out of Woodcart Drive, which is off of Woodcart Path because Woodcart Drive is the cul-de-sac and then Woodcart Path is a dead end and there's just like four houses there, so we're kinda removed. But when you try to come out now with just the existing traffic, sometimes we're sitting 20 minutes to try to get in. It's insane. I just don't see how that it, the area can sustain this kind of traffic without making it like Boston. And I moved from Boston when I was a kid. If I wanted traffic like that, I'd move back because my relatives are all there. So, I just think traffic is a big thing. I think that, I worry about the integrity of people's homes that might not show damage the first year, the second year, but because that happened, it could weaken a structure that doesn't show up right away. And who's gonna be, who's gonna handle that? Never mind the lack of privacy and the woodlands and all the animals. We have deer, raccoons, rabbits, coyotes, turkeys. We love it. What's gonna happen to all those poor things? You know, it's a beautiful area and I don't know why we want to disturb it and I don't like the feeling that I get that it's kind of being downplayed because we have to live there, too. And it's already, it's already so congested, it's insane. So, I'm just, my thing is the integrity of homes that could possibly be damaged and the damage doesn't show up right away. And that can happen. There's no way that any structuralist is gonna tell me that, oh, yeah, we're gonna blast or we're gonna do whatever. And you could weaken something that when they examine it that year or the year after, it doesn't show up. But you've weakened something down under. And then these homeowners, what do they do? What is their recourse? Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I usually talk in public, so I'm sorry. And plus, I'm Italian, so I talk with my hands, so.
Okay, if you can, yes, I think we're kind of, if you can make it brief, if it was a subject that was already discussed or brought up, you can just...
Try to make it real short and brief.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that because we're running out of time.
In favor of the project because that area is a designation of the aquifer zone. What happens in the areas of the aquifer zone is that they kind of get designated as, and I don't have a better word to say it, as the slummy part of town. And because of your designation or the town's designation, state's designation, whatever it is, it causes these, you know, these lands not to be used. Now, as far as the aquifer goes, this is...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you need to state your name and address for the record.
Randall Maderas and Tim Maderas, my brother, 822 State Road. Now, the ledge that's there now is obviously impermeable so it has no effect on the aquifer. It's already impermeable. And as far as what we're talking about here, and I'll make it real short, is that we're talking about something for human habitat, you know? These are, we have, I have five kids. They live in Dartmouth, we grew up in Dartmouth. They can't buy a house. We need housing for people. How, when are we gonna understand this? That's all I have to say.
I'm sorry, your name?
Timothy Maderas, I'm the property owner at 822 State Road, my brother Randy. Everybody wants a place for their children, nobody wants it next door.
In their backyards, yeah, we understand.
No one wants it in their backyard, let's just...
Okay, thank you.
Second thing, just really quickly here, is that as far as housing goes, there's not enough. There's just not enough housing in Dartmouth, period. Even with the projects that are ongoing, there's just not enough traffic. Traffic already is terrible over there. This is gonna be a fraction of a percentage of more traffic. It's already terrible. That has to be addressed in a different situation with the state and the town as far as Reed Road goes. But that, lastly, and this is an important one, this lot is gonna be redeveloped, whether it's done residentially or commercially. My brother and I are not gonna keep it vacant anymore. We've been paying taxes on this property for about 10 years since it's been cleared. You have a choice. You can either have residential, nice apartments, or we can put something else there. But it will be redeveloped.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make it quick. My name is Jeff Fribello. I live at 502 Reed Road in Dartmouth. I'm in favor of the project. I've seen that rock sitting there for as long as I can remember. A buddy of mine bought property right on the side of a different ledge down in Westport and the process of blasting isn't what everybody's thinking of. Like this rock blowing up, going everywhere is, it is not as violent as what people think it is. If you could see it with your own two eyes, you'd understand. So, I just want to say I'm in favor of it and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Where we continue with two? I think before we turn it back to Attorney Markey, I, you heard the comments, you know what the concerns are. I just want to add, I, in general, I think the site is tough, but I think it could be worked out. You know, as far, but the neighbors have to be at ease on how we're going to develop the property. So, there's a couple of concerns I have myself as a board member before we continue. I think what we need to do, excuse me, I, we're...
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm sounding like the decision has already been...
No, no, there's no decision here. No, no, excuse me, no. No, 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 no. That's not the process. We have to be fair. We heard your side, we need to hear their side and what they're going to do to accommodate your concerns. So, that's not, we're not making a decision tonight, so. I think the traffic on Route 6, Route 6 has the infrastructure for the traffic. We know that. My concern is the traffic lights. And I know sometimes, especially in the PM peak hours, sometimes you, the traffic is backed up on Reed Road. So, if we can just look at the intersection, you know, just some kind of traffic impact on the intersection to see what the, you know, residential homes, they don't generate, believe me, they don't generate the traffic that you're thinking of. You might have a high-generated retail there. Dunkin' Donuts might generate the same traffic that the 50 units will generate. So, and they can have this as of right. So, we're just, no, no, I'm just saying for now, I'm asking the applicant to look at the traffic because this is a concern that you have and also is a concern that we have. So, we want to make sure that a traffic consultant will look at this and, let me finish, please. You know, and Attorney Markey, I would like to see a plan on a large scale showing the existing dwellings within the closest dwelling to the building or to the edge of the proposed disturbances because there's a large section of the property that's wetlands that they cannot touch. And I'm sure there's trees and they can't touch, so, you know, you're concerned about privacy and I'm trying to address your comments, I'm trying to address your concerns. The traffic, and also I had another concern regarding the site circulation. If you can run this by the fire chief just to make sure, you know, the fire apparatus can go around the building or they have adequate access to it. You know, there were some other concerns I had with the zoning requirements or the zoning data, I didn't see on the, unfortunately, the plans I have or the plans that were uploaded did not show the stamps on them. And I, you know, we would like to see a stamped plan by a registered land survey showing the setbacks of the buildings and if we can also show the distances from the closest dwellings to the, I understand the building's gonna be set back at least 350 feet back from the road. Traffic, zoning data, fire access, the lot coverage, you covered that and the aquifer degrading, we show that with the grades, groundwater testing, it would be, I would advise just to get a couple, you know, a few test pits in the back to make sure, you know, you have the fire separation, I mean, the separation from the groundwater, you have decent soil that you can infiltrate, you know? Those are the things because obviously, stormwater is a concern, you know, with the residents. So, and you rest, and you heard the rest, you know, the blasting, you know? And I know these days, I'm an engineer myself, so I deal with these things. So, I'm very familiar, so I'm trying, I know for someone who's not familiar with these things, they have a lot of concerns and I agree with you. I'm not minimizing what you think or how you feel, you know? And I, trust me, I live in the area, I drive by that road every day. But unfortunately, you know, we have a property here that's been vacant for so long and we're trying to see if this is a good use that we can develop the property with, you know? Like I said, there's potential that you might have another retail that will generate probably twice the traffic and they won't have to, they won't need to come to the zone as of right. They can go and get a building permit from the building department, you know, so. But we understand your concerns and I'm sure that we dealt with the applicant before on a different project and they're pretty accommodating and they're very sensitive to the neighbors. And we hope that, so now, right now, we're not making any decision. We're going to continue the hearing till we get some answers on what some of your concerns and our concerns, too. It's not just you have concerns, so we understand that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, just to the board. If everybody could give us their name and address, Mr. Maderas would be happy to send out an email to invite... send out an email to invite your comments. Some people didn't get a chance to talk or might have another thought or got nervous when they were up here. I'd ask the board if we could continue until at least November 13th. That would give my client time to give them a week to give input, but then we have to hire engineers to try to address the issues and to try to get you answers. And I think this can be a positive dialogue. I appreciate the chairman's summarizing it and as well, and I know the chairman will talk about this again, but a number of the things that people talk about with the headlights and where they will go, planning is the place to talk about that because Planning Board really is specialized in what type of trees would do it, what would be the headlights. They normally would require us to do a traffic study. How much more traffic does residences compared to putting in a big box store, compared to putting in a Dunkin' Donuts? There are people smarter than me who are engineers who teach me about all of those things. And so I want to be able to answer as many questions as you've raised as we can. We can't do everything, but we can do as much as possible. But if we go out in that hallway, because I know there's a lot of people coming in for another case, so you can get us that information and Mr. Maderas will give you his contact information. Hopefully we can start a dialogue over the next week.
Before we leave and please, we're still in session, so keep the site conversation to, to a minimum, please. Before we, we continue the hearing, is there, I mean, do you have any questions for the applicants or do you have any concerns that decide what I talked about? I mean, you. Our concerns are basically the, the standard that we would, with every case, I mean, we look at traffic, we look at stormwater, we look at these things, so you know, it's not something out of the usual. But I think that would put the, the neighbors at ease if we have something from a traffic engineer saying yes, you know. There's going to be maybe some increase, but it's not going to change the characteristic of the traffic or the love of service, which I don't believe so. But again, I'm not a traffic expert, so I'd like to have that. And also with the fire, you know, so.
We'll address the issues that you, that the chair has raised and also as many as we can of the neighbors.
I think I talked to Michelle, I think the, we have to go to December 4th.
December 4th, that's fine. I'm not, it's your schedule. I just want to have the, have the communication.
Right, because we have the other 40B.
And us enough time to get the professionals to look at it.
Saying that, do I have a motion to continue this, the, the cases to December 4th, right? I think we have three, we have a special permit and we have two variances, so.
You're coughing into the mic. You have the numbers?
I do. I make a motion that we continue ZSP 25-5, ZAV 25-8, ZAV 25-9 to December 4th, 2025.
Second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we continue to December 4th. The next meeting is December 4th, will be here in this room. And this time, the app, the applicant will be here with some answers that we asked for. Thank you. We will take a five-minute break before we reconvene. The GBA is in session now.
Good evening, and the zoning board is back in session and we're, we're on the record. At this time, we're moving on to the next matter that's on the agenda. It's comprehensive permit ZCMP-25-1. This case was continued from September 25th of 2025. Petitioner is Paul Cusson. The owner of the property is Bliss Investors LLC. The property is located at 970 Tucker Road, also known as MAP 46 Lot 42. We've already read comments into the record, gentlemen. We've also waived the reading of the butters list. I'll move on to the actual request of the petition, but I'll keep it concise. The petitioner is seeking a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 30, and the Comprehensive Permit Guideline 760 CMR 56.0 from the Massachusetts General Laws and Dartmouth Zoning Law Regulations. The petitioner applicant is proposing a development on approximately 56.3 acres to be known as Residences at Hawthorne, to be located at 970 Tucker Road. Development will have a total of 147 homes, 100, of which 117 single-family homes and 30 duplex-type units. Within the, within the 147-unit development, 37 units will be designated as affordable and sold to households that do not exceed 80% of the rear median income. So at this time, I just want to provide a brief synopsis to the audience and to our viewers at home. When we were last here, well, actually it wasn't here, it was at the, at the middle school auditorium, we had heard on this part, project, we had heard from the traffic engineer for the petitioner and their explanation as to what the impacts this project would have on, and they had referenced three intersections that they had focused on, one being Route Six and Tucker Road, the other being Allen Street and Tucker Road, and the third was Russell's Mills Road and Tucker Road. I personally have more concerns about Route Six and Tucker Road, how that impacts the inflow of a lot of traffic, not only for this site, but also for many of the people that live in what I call central Dartmouth and south Dartmouth areas. So we're here today and we're fortunate enough that as part of this process, we are able to engage the services of a consultant, another engineer, sort of like a second opinion, if you will, in the medical field. But here, this gentleman is actually hired by the town and is here to explain to us what the impacts will, well, first, whether or not there are any inaccuracies with what was reported as part of their study, and when I say their, the petitioner's study. And they're going to provide us also some information as to maybe some other issues that they may have brought up or not brought up that we're able to elaborate on. So we're first going to hear from our traffic consultant, and then I will allow members of the board to ask questions. I ask the question directed to me as the chair, and then maybe there'll be more than one question that'll be had before we actually have our consultant answer those. If it's a, if it's a one-question-one-answer type situation, then that's what we're going to do. So those are sort of the grounds that I've set out at the inception of this. Obviously, we are all here, everyone here is concerned about our town. We are members of the board, we serve here as volunteers, and we're just as concerned as you are, and I understand that some of this can be emotionally charged. I ask you just to try to keep those motions as quelled as possible so that we can move forward as succinctly as we can. So at this time, I think I'm going to call upon, I think the gentleman is, I had his name written down here because I am terrible with names. Jeff Bandini is the individual that we've engaged from NICH to actually conduct this study. The floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you very much for having me this evening. Again, Jeff, excuse me, Jeff Bandini, Senior Project Manager with NICH Engineering, was here back on September 25th to hear the applicant's testimony with respect to the transportation impact study. At that time, what we did, our role, was to hear what the applicant had to say in terms of the information that they provided in their study and also hear the commentary from the board and the public as well in terms of their potential concerns about the development of the site as it relates to the transportation impact. At that time, we, the town had engaged NICH Engineering in the contract to provide the peer review services, but at that time, we had not had sufficient time to hear the applicant's testimony and provide our own review in time to submit a letter so that we could provide commentary on the full review at that meeting on September 25th. So in that interim, back on October 10th, between the 25th and October 10th, we were able to review the applicant's study, review the information that was presented here last time and take the public and the board's feedback into consideration upon completing our peer review. So at the time, I, I addressed a number of outstanding sort of high-level issues that we gathered from the initial testimony, either prior to the 25th or on the 25th. So in our peer review letter, we addressed eight of those comments and to sort of formalize those in terms of our request and our determination about what may be needed from the applicant moving forward. And from that time, that point, we also submitted an additional 21 comments on our own, based on the methodology that was included within the traffic study in terms of industry standards, in terms of what is, is looked for by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation and, and also some other governing bodies and methodologies that are out there. So what I'd like to do is walk through some of the specifics related to the comments here with you this evening. Before I do so, you know, the applicant could speak on their behalf, but, but basically NICH has not received any sort of formal response at this time. Given the timeline of the back and forth of this project, that's fairly normal, I would say, for the applicant to still be reviewing, but any sort of feedback that we could get from the applicant to indicate whether there may be further study would certainly be, would certainly be agreeable. So what I'd like to do this evening is to address some of the specific comments that were heard before, since those are in writing, and then address a portion of those additional comments that we shared in our, our review letter. So the first comment I wanted to address was the indication of whether further permits beyond the 40B permit would be required, based on some of the transportation thresholds or otherwise that may be required as part of this project that were not specifically addressed as part of the, as part of the application and/or the traffic, or, excuse me, transportation study. The second part was a discussion briefly on the geometry between Tucker Road and Russell's Mills Road, and I can get into some of the specifics upon that, but I just wanted to touch on that that was, that was mentioned before. I did talk a little bit last time about the specifics related to some of the onsite circulation and onsite amenities, including, you know, pet areas, mail delivery, walking paths and things like that. I talked a little bit about the applicant not providing information related to the intersection of Allen Street and Slocum Road, which I believe the applicant indicated that they would be providing that information. Again, we have not received it at this point, but again, I, I would consider that as normal as part of this review process, that given that that information was, was heard back on the 25th, that the applicant would still be pursuing, putting together that information. The impact on Friends Academy was mentioned. When we conducted our site review, we did have, we did send some of our engineers out there to review some of the access and circulation and found it was fairly consistent with the activity along Tucker Road and, and given the applicant's response last time that the traffic information was included in the study, we didn't see any sort of significant need for additional study at that location. The other few things I wanted to mention was the trip generation manual. The Institute of Transportation Engineers just released their newest edition, the 12th edition, which came out a little over a month ago, so we'd like to see a comparison of the trips in the transportation impact study as it relates to the, the two different methodologies from the 11th and 12th edition. I talked a little bit about the parking, I won't get too much into that. And then also, I wanted to add that we request that the applicant, in the transportation study, work with the developer directly on any sort of transportation-related items on the site itself, including striping, signage, site distance and things like that. We just want to make sure that there's cohesiveness between what's being conducted on the transportation impact side and the site development and site design side as well. So those were a portion of what was mentioned last time. So what I'd like to do this evening is go through some of the high-level analysis of what we found in our additional study. And, and I won't necessarily go through everything because some of them, some of these comments, I think, would be resolved in a fairly straightforward manner just by the applicant clarifying some of either the methodology or some of the specific numbers. But what I did, I do want to hit on some of the more poignant comments that may require further either applicant's study or response, either in this setting or via formal response in, in the forthcoming weeks. So the first thing we noted that was that the, the traffic volumes that were conducted along Tucker Road were conducted in January of 2025, and the turning movement counts within the locations in the study area were collected in May. So obviously, there's a little bit of a disconnect between some of the traffic volumes that may have been taken through the, the different times of year. We understand that the counts taken in January were seasonally adjusted to normal traffic conditions, which is certainly industry standard. But we want to make sure that the, the ATR volumes that are used as comparison in the study are commensurate with the speeds that are being used as part of the site distance evaluation, which again is a key component to traffic and transportation, intersection and stopping site distance is a primarily, primary safety feature of the site. So we want to make sure that, you know, if, if traffic counts are collected in January, what's happening at that time, right? If the roads are wet because of melting snow or slippery, vehicles might be traveling slower in January than they would be under maybe normal conditions, so that we, we requested that the applicant at least review some of that methodology and provide an opportunity to collect additional data for comparison purposes. One thing I also wanted to note in terms of the data collection was that there were no turning movement counts taken at the proposed site access location, which certainly, under existing conditions, there isn't a significant amount of traffic entering and exiting. Therefore, collecting turning movements at that location isn't necessary per se, but in, in terms of using it to evaluate future conditions and future operations, we would request a clarification on where those numbers were derived from, either some sort of traffic volume set from another intersection or the ATR information that was collected in January that I mentioned a few minutes ago. So looking for some additional clarification on that. One of the key points that I wanted to bring up was the crash data. There was some dialogue last time about the potential safety along the vicinity of the site. We, NICH ran their own crash query through the Mass dot Impact website, which is a public repository that collects information from state police and local police throughout the Commonwealth and is available for anyone's use. So what we did was we ran a query on a lot of the crashes that weren't necessarily at some of the intersections within the study area, basically looking at crashes that would occur basically at private driveways or between intersection locations where there might be a curve or a tree or something that's closer to the road that may be causing additional safety deficiencies within the study area. So what we would ask is that the applicant would at least comment on some of those, those existing crashes, because what we found was that there were approximately 75 crashes between 2017 and 2021 within that segment. So I just want to make sure that the applicant is at least acknowledging that that exists and if there's any sort of safety mitigation features that can be implemented, not necessarily at the intersections within the study area or the site driveway, but some of the areas in between. I know there was some dialogue last time about collisions with trees or vehicles running off the road during poor weather conditions or other conditions, so we just want to make sure that safety along Tucker Road can be addressed with that comment. Last time, we talked a little bit about the Mass DOT Traffic Improvement Plan, AKA TIP, project at, along Route Six. What I did want to discuss a little bit was the, the timeline that the applicant, application team talked about last time and that that was programmed to be conducted in the next year or so, potentially prior to execution of the development. Certainly in the political climate we live in, the, the funding and the programming for some of these TIP fundings could certainly be in jeopardy. So I, what I, we would request is some acknowledgement from the application if there's any, anything that can be done in case that TIP project doesn't come to be, whether that be a commitment to further study at that location or additional mitigation that could be done in the meantime to address any sort of safety or capacity concerns at that location. Couple more for you this evening. One of the observations at Tucker Road and Allen Street was mentioned that the observations were conducted in the month of July. We certainly understand the timeline of this project isn't always necessarily concurrent with when school is in session. However, you know, given the importance of the school traffic near and adjacent to the site and along the study area, we would request that the applicant comment on the observations that were done when school was not in session and if they would commit to doing additional observations now that school is in session and that there's at least comparable data that could be made between the turning movement counts that were conducted when school was in session. No worries. The other thing I wanted to mention was the safe, the potential safety at the site driveway. I mentioned previously the, the ATR information that collected speeds, which was used to establish the, the ASJO thresholds for intersection and stopping site distance. So again, I mentioned the recommendation to collect additional data to compare some of those speeds. But what we also wanted to do was provide a. we also wanted to do was provide a recommendation that the applicant review some of the information related to the site distance at the driveway, meaning not only the vehicles exiting the site can look to the left and look to the right and make sure they have sufficient site distance, but that the vehicles traveling along Tucker Road have sufficient site distance to execute maneuvers into the site. When you're traveling northbound on Tucker Road and the site is on your left, there's an existing horizontal curve that's coming around the corner, and the vehicles that are turning left out of the site may have sufficient site distance to look left or right, but the vehicles that are turning left in front of the vehicles coming at them may not necessarily have that sufficient site distance. So we requested that the application team put together a graphic that illustrates the existing and proposed site triangles, given the existing and the existing speed and the existing available site distance. Two more for you this evening. Wanted to discuss NICH's recommendation that the applicant, the applicant worked with the town on providing a speed monitoring program, you know, based on the travel speeds that were outlined in the traffic study. The travel speeds are a little bit higher. Again, we recommended that the applicant collect additional data to corroborate what was in the study, but the industry has had some success having towns implement some sort of speed feedback program where you have like the signs that say like, "Speed limit is whatever it is," and then you are traveling whatever, and then, you know, that has been shown to reduce travel speeds within the study area. That's just one example. NICH is certainly open to any sort of other safety or speed monitoring or regulation program that the applicant may, may want to pursue further. And the last one is, you know, if this project were to get approved in terms of the constructability of the site and how the, the development team would work with deliveries to the site. You know, as we've, we've talked about a little bit, the sensitivity of the study area to school traffic, a lot of construction deliveries tend to happen early in the morning so that the development and the contract team can get out on the site early in the morning. That also tends to coincide with, you know, students walking to school, peak morning travel, traffic, irrespective of what's happening at the school, and we want to make sure that those two things aren't overlapping. So some sort of program where it either only happens certain days of the week, or it happens earlier in the day, or there's some sort of a butter notice, or some sort of way that the application, the applicant team can acknowledge the, the delivery of heavy vehicles to the site. So that's what I have for you this evening. Again, Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, happy to take any questions from the board or any, any, any questions from the public directed to the board that you want to direct to us, or if you want to give the applicant team a chance to discuss as well, and we'd be happy to jump in or out of the conversation as much as needed this evening. Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing, but I first open it up to members of the board. Is there any comments or any questions you guys would like to have of the consultant?
I don't have any questions at this time. I think, you know, they, they covered whatever concerns we had at the last meeting and technical stuff over the TIA, you know, so.
Attorney Human?
I have no questions at this time.
Gentlemen?
I have none.
Doctor?
I'm not accused.
Oh, sorry. That's right. So at this time, I guess I will, well, we also have the option, before I do that, we have the option of having their consultant come forward and whether or not he wants to address any of the concerns, and it might be best at this point, so we can see what they're willing to actually do in light of. So I think their traffic consultant is here this evening. I think I see him. It's this gentleman, I believe.
Dueling podiums.
Just identify yourself, just for the record.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with the Vanasen Associates, and as you had introduced, we're the applicant's transportation consultant. I think, as I had mentioned, as we went through our presentation of the last hearing, we, we appreciate peer review. We think that it's helpful to the board, but also to the, the public in understanding the project. We take no exception to any of the comments that were raised. We are going to respond in a positive manner in terms of addressing each and every question that was asked. I would say that, from the standpoint of the feedback we received at the last hearing, it gave us the opportunity to get a jump start on some of these items. The reason that we have not responded in writing formally, and I can speak as a peer reviewer as well, I do not like getting information piecemeal because it doesn't allow me to do a comprehensive review and give the board back the feedback that you need. So we had already collected the Slocum Road, Allen Road information, what was requested by the board, that's, was already done. What you hear from the peer review, and we received this letter last Friday, is there's some additional data collection that they asked for. We've scheduled all of that, and so I'm hopeful that we will get that back this week. Similar to the comment on the January traffic counts, I would like to get it done while the weather is still fairly seasonable, which we will be able to do. And then we will respond to each and every one of these, these comments that are here. And again, we take no exception to any of those. The last thing I want to mention before I answer questions or sit down, the feedback we received from the public as well about the curves and the crashes that are happening at some of these curves, you heard that the, your reviewer has undertaken some analysis that relates to crashes. We've done the same thing, so I just want to assure the board and the audience that we heard everything. I took notes, and those were the things we were proactively addressing between the last hearing and now. And now that we have this review letter, we'll, we'll respond to everything, and hopefully, before the next hearing, your applicant, or your reviewer will have a chance to review our responses, and then we can hopefully move into a dialogue of the constructive things. And I, we appreciate the fact that your reviewer as well is pointing out some opportunities for improvements or things for us to look at, and we would be hopeful that as we've addressed, addressed some of these comments, that that's kind of what we'll be offering to you as well, addressing the concerns, but also coming up with things to address what the public and you as a board have expressed as areas where there may be some needs for improvements. So I'll leave it at that and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right. So at this time, unless you have any questions of this gentleman?
I have no questions.
I don't. I guess there's already somebody in the audience. So I'm just going to ask that, we do it one at a time, and when you come up, you identify yourself as clearly as possible, your name and your address, where you live in town. I see a gentleman back there with his hand raised. If you could just come up, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nathan Bean, 14 Hilltop Road, right by the Slocum and Allen intersection. My primary question is, there are 51A and 401(c)(3) nonprofit entities that exist upon Tucker Road, and there's tractors, there's heavy machinery, there's trucks towing things. Has the traffic analysis taken into consideration that this is agricultural land or places where other heavy machinery shows up when they show up? And if, if that is part of the assessment, I'd love to know more about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll ask our consultant to come up if he wants to address that concern. Did you understand the question?
In terms of accessibility for heavy machinery that exists on Tucker Road?
Yes.
That drives slowly.
That drives slowly.
Big tractors.
I see. Certainly, you know, that's included in the traffic data that we were, that we were given in terms of the volume of heavy vehicles and vehicles themselves. So it doesn't necessarily classify like tractors, per se. Like, we might look at like how many axles there are, or school buses, or things like that. Terms of delay, that would be included in the traffic data as well. I presume that there could be, you know, multiple vehicles, like you said, per day that, you know, potentially gum up the whole, you know, area, and then what happens is, you know, the vehicle turns off the road, and then, you know, there's a slight delay in all of that, too. But what we want to do is make sure that, that the capacity of that, you know, translates to some of the safety, too, is that there isn't any sort of like safety issue with that. So as long as vehicles can enter and exit the site as, you know, as prescribed by the applicant team, you know, we don't necessarily foresee any issue with that or any mitigation that would be required as part of that. What we could suggest is that there could be like any, some sort of signage or acknowledgement along Tucker Road that says like, "Heavy machinery, farmland," or something like that, that says like the, it sets the driver's expectation that those vehicles may come and go, you know, randomly throughout or from areas that may not be familiar to the folks using this site on a normal basis.
Excuse me, sir. You're going to have to come up, and you have to direct the questions to the board?
Apologies. Who governs how that signage occurs?
Usually, it's the DPW, but that's something that we can make a condition. My understanding is we can make it a condition if we were to grant their request.
We understand John George is a big mover there. DNRT has a property there. The other farm, the raw dairy farm has property there, and they all have big moving machinery that doesn't go over 25 miles an hour. And so if you got this whole new constituency of, what is it, 147 new housing developments, that they're not used to that if they're driving in somewhere and there's agricultural equipment that takes up a lot of space.
Well, obviously, that's something we can make a condition. We can.
If you, if you would consider that, Chairman, I would.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. I appreciate that.
We're going to consider everything.
I apologize.
Thank you. Sure. Absolutely.
We agree, yes. DPW would be the governing authority, as long as the roadway is, you know, owned by the town. If it were a state highway, it would be through the state permit system. The MUTCD, the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, does have warning signage for vehicles like this, and it has all sorts of standards about placement in terms of like the existing vehicle speed and things like that. So certainly, you know, we would be amenable to that being included as a condition if the town were to move in that direction.
I just have one other question. I have a distinct recollection of the last time that the gentleman for the, the expert for Vanas had come before us. He indicated that the study that was done, and I believe this was the study for Route 6 and Tucker Road, and I could be mistaken about that, was actually done on May 14th. I actually looked up the date. It was mid-May, and then when they actually looked up the date, it was May 14th. Then you indicated that the actual studies were done sometime in January.
Yes. To clarify, the turning movement counts, I believe, were the ones that were conducted in May.
Turning movement.
Yeah. So that's, that's when the, at the intersection itself, they collect the amount of vehicles turning left, right through, from every direction during the peak periods.
All right. So that was only gathered, that information from their study was gathered based on a study that was done on a January date. I don't know exactly which date it was, but a January date, a date in which schools were not open.
Not necessarily. So the, the ATR information was the automatic traffic recorder counts that record data continuously over a 24, 40, 72-hour period. What happens is, that data, I believe, was collected in January, and that was done to use as an assessment for the speed data, which was used as the basis for the site distance information that was presented.
Was that information collected specifically at the intersection of Route 6 and Tucker Road, or was it generally along Tucker Road?
The turning movement counts were collected at Route 6 at Tucker. The ATRs were collected along Tucker Road.
Okay.
So it's two different data sets. Normally, they're, sometimes they're collected together, sometimes they're collected separately. Sometimes, it's, it's not necessarily a, a deal breaker, per se, that they are collected separately, but for the basis of determining the site distance information, we would suggest that the information at least be looked at and collected again so that we would have supplemental information available to review.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone, anyone else that would like to come forward and ask any questions or address any concerns that they may have? This is your chance. All right. So, members of the board, are there any questions that you have for either the experts on this issue?
No, I'm, I'm anticipating that we're going to get more documentation.
Oh, there is. It appears to me that they were very, very accommodating in saying that whatever's been addressed, and they are actually, they're proactive, they're working towards gathering, and they already have some of it done, but they wanted to do it all collectively. That's my understanding. Fair assessment?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. So at this time, I guess, oh, there's one other thing I want to add. So gentlemen, there was an additional letter. I guess, yeah, there are two letters.
Yeah, this was information.
There was a letter that's dated October 3rd of this year from a Louis A. White, and there's also, and here, he actually addressed some of his, addressed some of his concerns, and actually, I don't know whether or not this has any significant relevance, but I'm going to call upon our expert one more time, if you can have him come up, please. So I did read this letter. I'm not going to read it into the record because it's quite lengthy, but one of the concerns that this particular individual had, and it's by Mr. Louis White of 12 Northveale Lane in Dartmouth, is that doesn't know whether or not it took into consideration the fact that these are two-to-three-bedroom homes, and given the number of bedrooms per unit, that there is likely to be more than two vehicles that are going to occupy each of the residences, and whether or not this traffic study took that into consideration.
I will say, in terms of parking or in terms of vehicle trips, or both?
Terms of vehicle track.
Generation.
Trip generations.
My understanding was that the, and our review suggested that the trip generation was done correctly and used the correct, what they call land use code, LUC for, for short. So what Institute of Transportation Engineers does is they put together a comprehensive list of land uses, and they use, and then they collect data on their own, or they, they ask for folks to submit data on their behalf, and they collect all of this data from different parts of the country over a timeframe, and they, they, they basically give you a scatter plot of number of trips per, they, per development. And as long as the information in terms of that the use is proper and that the application team used the correct use, then those numbers would be represented as correct, and that we confirm that based on our review letter. However, I will add, as I mentioned earlier, and I alluded to it at the, at the previous hearing, was that the Institute of Transportation Engineers recently published a new document that has newer data that was able to capture some data that was collected during COVID years or post-COVID years, and also removed data that was deemed obsolete from the 1970s and 1980s in areas that were not necessarily relative or relevant to areas that we may be concerned with, or countrywide, basically. I think IT had some, some data that was in like Canada and other places that may, the data may not be applicable. So that's why I wanted to suggest that the application team look at the 12th edition to say like, okay, comparing the 11th and 12th edition, does that mean there's going to be more trips than the data that was shared in the study, or does that mean there's going to be less? We don't know. The, the data was just recently released. So that's part of what we wanted to, to see, right? Like, if it's more, maybe the, maybe there's more mitigation that's required. If it's less, then the application team has presented a conservative analysis, and there's probably no additional study or mitigation beyond what we've already shared would be required.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Kate, Kate Dabney. I live at 82 Fairway Drive. I was just curious if we could get an answer to the question of whether these are private or public roads that would be instituted in, in the community.
You mean within the development? Actually, these gentlemen are not the individuals, I think. Would you answer that question? No.
I agree. I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, it's probably not, not the appropriate person. We, we'll get into that the next, on the next phase of this, and I'm sure they'll have their engineer there, and he'll explain to us what their intentions are, but I think they're going to be, to be accepted ways, to be public ways, but I'm not sure. But that's just what I've been able to surmise, but we'll find out. So we're going to move along. So now, we're going to hear this evening from the consultant or the expert for the petitioners in this case with regard to, excuse me? No. Let's see. I know it's not water and sewer because that's down the road. It's actually the stormwater and the engineering portion of the design plan that they put forth. So at this time, we're going to call upon the petitioner's expert to come forward and explain to us what it is that the impacts will be for stormwater. And just for the, our viewers at home and the people here in the public tonight, we're going to hear from him. We also have, I believe, a consultant that's going to listen to what their proposal is, and at the next meeting, they will, they will provide to us their opinion, sort of verifying whether or not, whether their assertions are accurate or if there's, requires additional information. So we're informed as to what the impacts will be to our stormwater. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Fallon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Christian Fallon, Principal Engineer and President of Fallon Corp. Before I dive into the stormwater, I just want to have the attorney just address that one question about private or public roadway, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Jay Tallerman, counsel for the applicant. Certainly, when we construct the project, all the infrastructure is private. Because there's a subdivision as part of this project, there's always a possibility that it could get presented for a layout by the select board and then town meeting. But the installation, all the resources, all the organizational principles, at the start, they'll be private, there'll be a homeowners' association, all of that. So I hope that answers the question.
Yes, so basically, you're saying to the members here, to people in the public, that any type of trash removal is going to be private here?
100%.
Snow removal will be private?
All of the infrastructure. Now, I don't know, for example, what kind of public trash collection may be available. I don't have that information as to whether or not people even on private ways are entitled to public trash collection. We can get that answer for you, that it may very well be that they are entitled to trash collection. We can help on that. But all the infrastructure, the drainage, the roads, the sidewalks, everything else, all that infrastructure going in as private, and only if the select board lays out the roads and town meeting accepts those roads, will it be public. And that's pretty typical routine with any subdivision, so...
No, I agree. I was just thinking ahead that ultimately, you're probably looking, or the petitioner's looking, to have these accepted as public roadways.
That's the dream for every developer, for sure.
Okay. I think our counsel wants to ask...
Yeah, no, I just want to kind of just contribute a little bit regarding the acceptance of the public ways. I mean, obviously, town meeting would have to approve it, so ultimately, it's going to be up to the residents of the town. But typically, as part of a street acceptance process, the town will look at, and I'm assuming your DPW would do this, look at the manner in which the roadways were constructed, and whether or not they were constructed to the town's subdivision rules and regulations standards and the town's streetway standards. And just noting that there are significant waivers that have been requested to the town's subdivision rules and regulations for the construction of roadways. So that the less that these roadways are constructed to town standards, the less likely DPW or the select board or the voters of this town would be willing to take responsibility for them. So I think that that's something that the applicant needs to keep in mind as well.
Yeah, and we'd agree that that's a pretty typical way to look at these things. Sometimes, roads that don't meet existing subdivision standards still do get accepted, but quite aware that municipalities, especially the select board, when they're deciding whether or not to lay out, which is a roadway which is entirely at their discretion, are going to look to the planning board and DPW to make sure that the roadways are up to snuff.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did that answer the question, ma'am? I wasn't sure myself. All right. Thank you.
Good evening again. Christian Fallon, Principal Engineer and President of Fallon Corp. Since the last meeting, we have submitted a full set of plans, 33 drawings altogether. And we have submitted a stormwater report, which was approximately 1,300 pages. I'm not going to go over that tonight. I don't think anybody wants me to. But I do want to let the board know, that whole plan set included a lot of the things that you had mentioned before, in addition to the stormwater, a lot layout plan, just as a formal subdivision would be presented. It's a complete plan set with landscape, lighting, everything that's needed for the board to review and vote on. In regards to the stormwater design, we're required to meet mass DEP stormwater requirements. We can't ask for any waivers from that. That's a state requirement. So the project, whether this was a 40B project or a typical residential subdivision, the standards are the same. And as an engineer, one of the most important things a civil engineer looks at is stormwater. Traffic engineers have their specialty, but stormwater, that's my specialty. And my goal as an engineer is to meet the stormwater standards. There's 10 stormwater standards. The ones that I'm going to talk about tonight, which is the ones that I believe the abutters will understand, is stormwater standard number two, which basically says the design engineer has to design the site such that the post-development, which is after it's constructed, has less water running off to the abutting properties than the current situation is. That's stormwater two. The calculations that we provided certainly demonstrate that. And for this site, although the soils of this site is classified as C soils, sandy soils would be classified as A soils, B is pretty good, C starts getting a little, water doesn't infiltrate into the ground as quickly as it would for A soil. So the design criteria is a little different. Where for A soils, you would have more infiltration into the ground, you would design your stormwater basins more as an infiltration basin. With C soils, it'll be more as a detention basin, where you want to design the basins enough to handle the water, and then slowly, they will drain out. And we have done that through outlet control structures. That's standard two. Standard four is also, I mean, they're all important, but these two, I feel the most important is the water quality, especially with the abutting wetland resource areas down to the west of the property. We want to make sure that the water quality meets DEP stormwater standards, which requirement is 80% TSS removal. We meet that one as well. I can go over the stormwater, but basically, the entire site drains, majority of the site drains, from the easterly top portion of the site to the westerly portion of the site, which is the abutting resource area. There's a portion of the site to the east that does drain to the Tucker Road residence. That was the area I probably looked at most carefully as the abutters' residence. So that's my responsibility to make sure that after this development's done, they won't have any additional stormwater going to their properties. After this design, actually, that's going to improve that stormwater, as we're trying to capture much of it to our site. It was a little balancing act because the houses along the easterly portion of the site, as you can see, I tried to pull them away as far as I possibly can from the abutting properties to give a good landscape buffer. If I was living in one of those existing houses or one of these proposed houses, I would want that distance as far as I possibly could. Anytime I do a development, I try my best to design it as if I was in an abutter, or I'm a future homeowner. So I think that's what we did here, and it worked out pretty well. Originally, we had 144 residential units. With the stormwater designed, we are actually down to 138. And the reason for that is we needed additional stormwater basins throughout the development. Altogether, we have 11 basins throughout the project. I would show you them, but most of you may not know what you're looking at. It's difficult to see. But if you can see the line there, that's actually the drain line that runs. So the closed drainage system is going to be made up of basic catch basins that you see along roadways that the water drains into. And there'll be piping, there'll be drain manholes, and most of them will drain, most of the drainage in the street drains all the way down into the two large basins that are down at the bottom. The basins that you see on these lots, it's a lot of, we have a lot of green space here, and a lot of grading behind the houses going on. So we don't want a lot of that water just sheet flowing into the street. So we tried capturing that sheet flow from the proposed abutting properties, new properties, to capture that water and to detain it for a short period of time. And all these detention basins, as I mentioned, have an outlet control structure. Basically, an outlet control structure is a structure where, as the pond fills up, at the bottom of the structure, you'll be able to see a six-inch diameter hole, though the water slowly drains out. During larger storm events, the water exceeds that six-inch pipe, and then we would have a weir, a rectangular weir, and I believe most of them are two feet by six inches. So the water, as it fills up, and now hits that weir, more water starts going out. And we designed all the basins to be able to handle a 100-year storm event. So the water stays in there. We do get a little infiltration with C soils, but the water does drain out. And those ponds will drain out within 72 hours, so we won't have standing water in these ponds. We did provide, along with the stormwater report and operation and maintenance plan, which is very important, to maintain these basins. I'm sure many of you have seen some old stormwater basins that have been neglected, overgrown. You see trees growing in them. That's an issue. So part of this application, we do have an operation and maintenance plan. And certainly, if there's a homeowners' association, they would be responsible to maintain these stormwater basins. Also, this project does require us to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, so this operation and maintenance plan will be on record. So they will have to follow it. And if they don't, they would be in violation, and enforcement orders would be put on to the owner and the HOA to make sure that they address any issues that come up. We haven't received any comments from the peer review consultant yet, but I'm sure we will. I have worked with their company several times on peer reviews, and they're working on your behalf. We're both engineers. I'm sure there'll be some technical questions, comments that they come up with, but I'm pretty positive that the design that we have here tonight would be one that they would support as we fill the soils and the topography of this land. The best approach would be these detention basins as we designed. And as I said, there was actually more than I thought we were going to need. And that's something that, you know, is designed very conservatively, as this, there's a lot of residential units here. The last thing we want is anybody's backyard fund. Not yours specifically, but the future homeowners here as well. So we need to, that stormwater did take a little longer than we anticipated, but we are confident that we'll meet all the requirements and the peer review consultant. The utilities, we don't want to touch on that tonight, correct?
I don't have any specific, what do you think, Susan?
Well, I think there's been at least preliminary discussions, and I know it's desired by Mr. Barber from DPW, that there's a request to actually have the engineers meet, have a meeting with town staff and STANTEC to discuss that before it's presented to the board because of, particularly with respect to issues related to the town's wastewater treatment plan. So if the applicant was amenable, I mean, that's a recommendation that it would be more productive to have that presentation to the board after there's been a discussion, and if there's the ability to have feedback from the town and from STANTEC on their proposed.
I don't think you'd have any objection to that, Mr. Fallon. Excuse me. You want to have any objection to that, Mr. Fallon, would you?
Not at all, no. That's no problem. I know we had tried early on to meet with them, but they wanted to wait until the peer review consultant fees were paid and so forth, so we have no problem with that.
Fair enough. All right, so I just have a couple of questions before I open up the public comment. How far would you say those homes are the proposed homes? How far are they from the property line, the northern property line of this project?
I know the closest home to any property line is a little bit over 50 feet. And that, these ones along Tucker are certainly further than that. The ones I'm talking about would be these here. So that's approximately 50 feet.
Those are in the southern portion, on the southern portion of the development?
Right here. These are approximately 50 feet away. That's the closest one.
If you could go back to the one on the northern perimeter boundary?
Yep.
How far are some of those there?
These?
To the east, you mean?
Yeah, that's the north.
Yeah, this is, well, this is Tucker. These are the houses along Tucker.
Yep.
It's tough to tell right here. I mean, this scale is one inch equals 40, so you're probably...
East. That's the east, you're right.
Could be over 100 feet away.
Okay. What about on the northern, that's the easterly side of this project, right?
Yes.
What about the northerly side?
The northerly side, we have, there's a strip there that the town owns, which is great, because there's...
How big is that strip?
There's this whole strip that the town owns here. I think it's 100...
Is that a no-builts strip that follows the stream?
Sir?
Sir?
I'll open it up. You'll have an opportunity. I'll give you plenty of time. So you're saying that on the northern side of this project?
Yes.
That there isn't a home within 100 feet of the proposed project? That's the eastern side, right? I'm talking about the northern side.
Yeah, yeah.
It's wetlands.
Yes, this is, this is all wetlands down here. This is the strip I'm talking about.
Okay.
And there's additional wetlands across it.
Hmm.
So definitely over 100 feet.
Okay. Another question. Has this impacted the number of homes that can be constructed on this project?
Yes, we went from 144 to 138.
I think it was 147 originally. 147, yeah.
So it was 147, and it's now how many?
138.
138.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. I know you just submitted revised plans, but is there a color one that's kind of a good representation that could be done?
We could do, absolutely.
Now that you've reconfigured it with the basins? I think that the board, this was part of the application, it kind of helps. It's a little easier for people to read than...
Absolutely, we could do another color.
Next hearing, we could do that? All right.
I do want to mention too, in regards to the wetlands, this is probably the first 40B project that I've been involved with, where we have no houses within 100 feet of a wetland. The only portions, only a work we have in the wetlands are the two large detention basins. So we certainly took that in mind here with this dense development, where it's almost, you know, kept everything as tight as we possibly can to minimize impervious areas. And a lot of these houses, as you see, the backyards are pretty large. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience? Let me start with this. I always seem to forget about the board. Does anyone on the board have any questions of the engineer?
No, not at this time. I don't have any questions. This is being reviewed by the...
Mr. Chair?
At this time, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, the board's peer review engineer is here. If you want him to provide any general oversight...
I will. I just wanted to see first if anyone had any comments, and then we'll have him provide any type of comments that he would like to present. Because I know he's got limited information at this point.
Okay. I have a comment regarding the regulations that the applicant is proposing to comply with.
Okay.
If that's okay. So there was a comment that the project's going to comply with the state stormwater standards. The town in 2018 adopted a stormwater management bylaw. It's Chapter 13 of the Towns Code. It was adopted, and it states it in here, that it was stated, it was adopted in accordance with the requirements of 40 CFR 122, which is a federal regulation, and the town's MS4 permit, which is a stormwater permit that is issued by the state and is required pursuant to the federal regulations. The Housing Appeals Committee, which is the first line of appeals, if there is an appeal, on a 40B application, stated in a case in 2023 that because... on a 40B application, stated in a case in 2023 that because the local stormwater regulations were adopted, they were mandated by state and federal law for the town to adopt these local regulations to comply with state and federal law, that they stated that the requirement of compliance with local bylaws and regulations to meet federal and state law thereby removes these local rules and regulations from consideration as local requirements or regulations. So therefore, the Housing Appeals Committee has stated that any local stormwater regulations that are adopted purely to comply with the federal and state MS-4 permits must also, they're not considered local regulations, and therefore, they cannot request waivers from them. So the project is also going to need to comply with the state's, the local stormwater regulations.
Are they in compliance based on how the presentation?
I think he only stated that they're complying with the state regulations, not that they're complying with the local regulations.
Okay. Well, that's why we have a peer review. So at this time, I'm going to call upon anyone in the audience that has any questions about, is a gentleman here? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jacqueline.
Just give him a moment. I think he's consulting there just for a moment. Just want to make sure he hears the question.
Can I just ask, before we move on, just a quick comment on that? You know, I'm aware of the case, but it's not quite as simple as that. If a local bylaw has more stringent provisions than what's required by the state, then that is potentially waivable? We're not saying right now here today that we're seeking a waiver of those, but the case is a little more complicated in that we're actually involved on behalf of a municipality on that exact issue. So we can brief the board next time on this.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairperson, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jacqueline LaSalle. My husband, Louis Pinto, and I live at 2 East River Drive. We're direct abutters to the Hawthorne Country Club. We're very concerned because there's a brook that runs from Tucker Road straight down behind all of the properties coming down Country Club Boulevard, and it directly runs through the side, our side property. And during storms, like since we had last week...
Excuse me one second. We've got to limit any conversations. If you need to speak, you can go, just step outside, and you can come back when the conversation's through. Thank you. Sorry.
And when there's a storm like we've had recently, the stormwater drains coming all the way down through our property, and it's absolutely amazing. It's like the water rises so much into our properties, all the way down our backyards. And my neighbor across the street at 1 East River Drive, the brook actually runs probably no more than, say, 10 feet off his front door. And the water comes straight up onto the property. I mean, sometimes we're concerned with flooding for him. It literally runs right outside his front door. It comes along our side of the property. But during large storms in the winter, and just general tropical storms, rainstorms, it can probably rise two feet, if not more. But luckily, the way it's positioned, there's a lot of rocks, and it doesn't come up into the property. But it's like a waterfall coming down, and it's a huge roar. So I'm very concerned with that, and I'm hoping that Conservation will do some sort of study and make sure that it's appropriate to have so many homes built. And of course, we're also concerned with the drainage and the runoff that will affect our property.
Just for some clarification, you're on River Drive, you said?
We're on 2 East River Drive.
And where is that exactly in relation to this? Is it south of it, or is it north of it?
It's north.
It's north. So this is north of this site?
It directly abuts the property, yeah.
I was just told that there's a budding the north is the strip that's owned by the town. Is there a buffer there that exists that's owned by the town that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of that.
Right. Let's see.
Because Louis Pinto, 2 East River Drive. So when they cut the grass, I mean, they basically cut the grass all the way to our property, so.
When you say they cut the grass, who?
Well, the people that own the property, or they used to own the property.
And you are butted on the north?
Yes, on North Side.
I just want to get a sense of where this is, so that it can be properly addressed.
It's difficult to understand from the map. It's not clear. If you come down Country Club Boulevard, and you come to the stop sign, East River is right there, left and right. It's perpendicular. If you take a left, we are the last house on the left. And there's a brook where you can't even cross to go into the property. So, because the brook, it curves around. So it comes, it comes straight down from Tucker Road this way. And as it's coming down, it curves around. Here's our property, and it goes right in front of our neighbor's house. Like I said, probably 10 feet off their front door.
I don't know whether or not this particular brook actually comes upon this property.
What we have is that inner pass. I mean, there was another pass, and that was for another, another development, I believe, east of Tucker Road. And basically, that would present some problems, and I believe that you're familiar with those issues that that development had with that drainage.
Well, we're going to have a consultant who's going to review all this. He's going to speak this evening just preliminarily on some of the information that he's been able to gather, and he's going to provide us a much more detailed explanation. But the way that this is designed, and I'm not an expert in this area. I've been learning this stuff as I've been sitting here for years, and this gentleman knows a lot more about this than most in the room. One of the things is that when they designed this, I've come to learn that they designed it so all the water that comes onto this property has to basically stay on this property and be encompassed on this property. And if there's any that's, they call it sheet flow, if there's any that's actually going onto other people's property, they will minimize that, if not do away with it. That's one of the goals of what they're supposed to do. So obviously, when our consultant looks at this, we'll address the concern that this river, brook, that you call the brook that rises, whether or not that's been taken into consideration in the calculations of the amount of stormwater that they've put and calculated will go into these ponds. They call them detention or retention ponds, depending on exactly how they work. And I don't know, we can ask him now whether or not he's well aware of, he may be well aware of this brook, I don't know, and whether or not that was taken into consideration in these calculations. Okay?
Mr. Farland, are you aware of the brook that runs through our property and all the way?
No, 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 no.
Yep. I have to ask the question, but thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairperson.
Yes, I'm going to ask, and we'll see what kind of response. And I'm sure if he doesn't know, he'll probably let us know.
Thank you.
Mr. Farland, you heard the question?
I do, and I'm pretty sure I'm familiar. I know the area, there's a buffer there as the town owns, and then there is, you know, additional wetlands over there. So I'm assuming that must be the area she's describing. If you look at the topography on our plan, you can kind of see a swill. It's off our property. It's actually off the town's property, too. It runs, you know, right down here. And as you go further down west...
There's East River Drive.
It gets a piece of a wetland here. So it's, it turns into wetlands at that point. And then I'm not sure if it connects to the large wetlands down further or not. But either case, it's off, it's off our property. Our goal is to make sure that we're not adding any more stormwater to that, and the answer to that question is no.
And how do you, how can you tell us that?
So the stormwater, the stormwater calculations, we have subcatchment areas for the pre and the post. If you look at the topography, you can see that a lot of this stormwater from the existing conditions sheet flows right down to this property. After this development, majority of this is sheet flowing directly into our street, which is capturing the stormwater. So it has less water, not even including any of the drainage we're doing, but it's actually less area going offsite than what was previously before.
Just based on the topography?
Based off the existing and proposed topography.
Okay. We'll ask that question again to our expert, but yes. All right. So there's another gentleman I think wants to speak. If you could just identify yourself, please.
Mr. Chairman, James Bean, 205 Slade's Corner Road. So I'm not abutting at all, but my concern is for the health of the Pascomansett River, because I assume all of this catchment is still going to end up in the river, and then it flows down into the Slocum, which is an estuary attempting to keep the health of the bay alive.
All right. Are there any type of abatement type of procedures or mechanisms that are in place?
Again, that's standard number four, which is in regards to water quality. Currently right now, the site doesn't have any treatment. Even from all that pavement area, it's all just sheet flows all down into the wetland resource areas. So the proposed development is a significant improvement, because now we're meeting all the stormwater standards, and water quality is certainly one. And that was one of the two that I talked about. That's certainly important.
And when you say water quality, what type of treatment? Is there a system that's in place?
So we have, the catch basins are all deep-sump, catch basins. That's the first treatment. As far as part of the operation and maintenance, the roadways get swept quarterly from all the, you know, solvents and so forth. And then we have the detention basins, which have a sediment floor bay, which is designed to handle any additional suspended solids that get into the basin. And then after that, they overflow into the actual detention basin pot. So there's several pretreatments that make sure that we meet the water quality standards.
I think it's typical. I'm sure if he's explaining it in the manner that he is, it's probably a requirement that's required of almost all subdivisions in today's day and age of what they need to do for any sheet flow runoff.
I just, the concern for the river, I taught at Friends Academy for 29 years, and part of that was the outdoor education. We had the kids, you know, water testing in the river just as part of their, you know, biology. The river already takes a big enough hit from further up at the mall. And so that's just my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I asked a follow-up question.
Sure, just identify yourself again, please.
Nathan Bean, 14 Hilltop Road.
Very great.
So the Pascomansett is a dynamic waterway. That being said, occasionally it flows backwards, especially when we get those huge nor'easters or, you know, a category more than one hurricane. Is there any mitigation for when stuff starts to back up and not work the way that it should? Because it is, it's an estuary. It's a waterway, but it's wetlands, which means that the water flows in all directions. So is there a backup plan for when those sumps get overwhelmed?
Chairman, yeah, the, so the stormwater design is dissolved up to 100-year storm event. The basins themselves, as I mentioned, they have outlet control structures. So the water will drain.
Where will it go?
The water is draining into the border vegetated wetlands.
Okay.
Yes, to the west. And we have designed everything as far as we possibly could away. So it actually gives a buffer. We're not discharging directly to the wetlands. It actually discharges the land, and then it sheet flows to the wetland areas. And the water is cleaner than what it currently does now.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. Is there anyone else that has any questions? Come on up, sir.
Chuck Residick, 8 Green Drive. You mentioned something about requirement of street sweeping and removing of salts. Is that correct?
Yes.
Assuming that these roads are not accepted by the town and are under an HOA-type thing. What, is there anything in place that would require that that be done by the HOA?
If I may, sir, those are the conditions that we would impose, and that's why we have these public hearings, to listen to exactly what your concerns are. So I already have here something about signage for heavy equipment.
Yep.
And now you have a concern about making sure that the roadways are properly maintained, clean of debris, salt, sand, things of that nature.
That's part of the...
That would be part of the condition, that would be a condition of this subdivision.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to say, sir? All right. I just want to make sure I take that note properly. So it was roadway maintenance?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
That condition will also be part of the Conservation Commission as well.
Well, I just got to make sure it's part of it here, to ensure in the event that they do not put it into place, at least we've done so, where we maintenance.
And Mr. Chair, only a small portion of this property, as they noted, two detention basins, are located within ConCon jurisdiction. So the majority of the stormwater for the site is not even in jurisdictional area, the ConCon. So that's why it's important that this board address it as well.
Normally, the maintenance plan would be recorded at the residential deed with the property. So the maintenance plan will have, will go with, under deeds.
Whether the stormwater system is outside jurisdiction is included, actually, because it all drains to the well. So the entire drainage system would be part of the operation and maintenance plan.
So that's all where it's going? Because you said there's detention basins that's infiltrating.
They infiltrate, but they have an outlet control structure, which goes back into the drainage system, which leads to the big detention basins.
Thank you.
It's a complete, one complete system.
Okay. Is there anyone else? This won't be the last time you'll have to speak, but come on up.
Karen Everett, 66 Fairway Drive. On the far end of the property, that I guess is the later part of the development, there is a pond. They have not mentioned what, how far they're going to stay away from that. It's not a puddle. It's a pond. It has fish, birds feed there, nest there. I'd like to make sure that's addressed.
So you're saying this pond is not on the property?
It is on their property.
It is on the property, okay. And where is it specifically, ma'am?
If you pull the picture up, I'll show you.
Right there. It's about, I don't know.
So in that general area, I take it that's probably the west, the southwest part of the property?
Southeast.
Southeast? Yeah, south, south, southeast. There's a pond there? Okay. All right. Is there anything, anything else, ma'am, that you wanted to ask? Is there anything else that you wanted to ask, other than this pond?
I just want to know that that will be addressed by...
We're going to ask them.
Yes.
You heard the question.
Yes. That area was looked at by the Conservation Commission, and it was also looked at by our professional wetland scientist. And it is non-jurisdictional. That was a pond made for the golf course. So we did, as I stated in one of my first presentations, the wetland boundary has been approved already through the Conservation Commission. So that area would be filled in as it's part of the, as shown on the grading plan.
Is it not considered a vertical, it's non-jurisdictional?
It has to be a certain size, I think.
Is that what it is? Okay. Counsel?
So was that, did you do an AMRAID, or what was the?
I can get you the, I can get you the, it was done earlier on, but I can get you the application.
Okay. If you can provide the board with a copy of the plan that was submitted and approved by the Conservation Commission.
Sure.
How long ago was that?
I'm off to get you the exact date.
Was it more than two years? Is it still valid?
It's still valid. The first, one of the first things I did when I started this project, and I start any large project, I want to make sure the wetland boundary is good. So I did reach out to Mark Garrett at the Conservation Commission. I have an email with him asking if the wetland boundary is still good. With, he did confirm yes with the Permanent Extension Act that was, has been in place.
Yep.
So again, I'll get that to the board probably Monday morning.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else have any questions? Come on up, sir.
Dennis Mann, 54 Hyacinth Drive. My backyard abuts the 7th Green. Anyway, this is on traffic. I have a concern. Last year, I had two heart attacks. The ambulance came twice. Anyway, this is on traffic. I have a concern. Last year, I had two heart attacks. The ambulance came twice. If there's delays because of the traffic impact with 140-something houses, and one or two minutes mean a lot to me. And all the people that live in the gardens of the summit and the summit and the greens, they're all senior citizens. It's going to make a major impact for us. And I would just like the board to take into consideration that a small delay could be a big delay for people like us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. So, I want to hear a little bit, at least a preliminary, at least have some discussion with our expert on this stormwater science issue. And at this time, I'm going to call upon, if I may, I think the gentleman, I have not met the gentleman, Mark Gabriel from NICH. Is he here? He is here. Okay. Oh, we made eye contact earlier, but I didn't know who you were.
I smiled and waved, too.
Yes, you did.
Excuse me. For the record, Mark Gabriel, I'm a senior project manager with NICH Engineering.
Okay.
I've been hired by the town to do a peer review on the project. As Mr. Farland mentioned, there's a, you know, the plans have been submitted, 1,300-page stormwater report, and I'll be diving into that, no pun intended. So, it's a lot to read, and I'll be getting into that to check the calculations versus the design of the plans. But my role is beyond stormwater as well. I'll be looking at some of the layout of the site, the grading of the site, some of the utilities. I know water and sewer are going to be by others, so I'll be looking at some of the other utilities in the project, the parking and the general flow, too. So, all that will be part of my review that I'll be doing over the next couple of weeks in advance of the next meeting.
Okay. Why, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we'll be hearing from this gentleman the next time, and that's one of the things we're going to discuss. Does anyone else that's got any residual questions that you have for today? We're still going to have public comments the next hearing. There's going to be more hearings. So, if there's something that you think about between now and then, just take a note, and you'll be able to ask it next time we come here. We have a concern about a brook. We have a concern about a pond. Pond situation, it seems like to me that our own wetlands department, well, the Conservation Commissioner has made a determination that it wasn't something of concern. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I guess I have a habit of doing that. So, the pond, it's my understanding that the wetlands commissioner, the Conservation Commissioner, has gone out to the site at the inception of this project and made a determination of where the wetlands concerns were. And they didn't feel that that was something that was within their jurisdiction, meaning it's not an area that they protect. So, as a result, it appears to me that that's going to be an area that's going to be developed and not a protected area. Now, they're going to provide us proof of that, and we're going to look at it, and obviously, we'll even have this gentleman maybe take a look at it. I don't know if you're familiar with what her question was earlier.
Yes, I'll be looking at that, Ms. Madeira, from a stormwater standpoint, all right? Because that pond on the site does provide, if you will, retention to it. If water flows to it, it gets to go in the pond and maybe overflow and continue along. So, all of that would be captured in their pre-existing calculations that we'd be taking a look at for the project.
So, maybe we'll ask that question again the next time. So, at this time, I guess we've got to pick some dates. Does that make sense? Susan, is there anything else I need to address? Sure. Come on, come on up.
So, once again, I'm Nathan Bean, 14 Hilltop Road, on behalf of my mother, Cynthia Bean, 205 Slade's Corner Road. She's non-verbal. She's disabled, and she would like to second that gentleman's comment about the response time for immediate response when a medical emergency occurs. So, I'm speaking on her behalf, if that's satisfactory for you, Mom.
Well, we're fortunate enough. Thank you for that question. We're fortunate enough, we still have both the traffic consultants here, both the petitioners consultant and also our consultant. So, they've heard, they've heard the question, and I'm sure that they'll be able to address it the next time we're here. All right, so.
Mr. Chair, just before you get into?
Hold on, I just want to take that note down before I forget. Just give me just one second. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the other note that was provided to the board for tonight is regarding an update on the peer review contracts and the peer review funds. So, as discussed at the last hearing, there were some questions and concerns raised about scope and cost estimates of peer review. As was discussed at the last hearing and promised by myself and the staff, including Mr. Vitale, who's the Assistant Town Administrator, there were conversations with both of the peer review firms, NICH Engineering and STANTEC. It was determined after reviewing with them, myself, my personally, myself going through with them, what the peer review standards are under Chapter 40B regulations, that the scope of what they intend to undertake is consistent with that. They are not doing any independent studies or analyses, et cetera. The board had voted at its, and in fact, in response to that, NICH Engineering kind of created some efficiencies because they had separate proposals for stormwater and civil. But your peer reviewers here today is doing both, so they've consolidated those. He's found efficiencies there. And the estimates, again, they're estimates, came down from both that and also clarifications with STANTEC as to the types of reviews that they're going to be doing. Those were all provided to the applicant. At the prior hearing, the board voted to require that a third of the estimates for civil stormwater and water sewer be deposited. A further deposit was made. It was about $11,000 and change, short of the one-third that the board voted to require. There is still a balance, I believe it's a little over $45,000 in the peer review account. However, I'll note that when the last $30,000 deposit was made, the applicant sent it with a comment stating, "We're giving you $30,000, and that's enough." So, I would state that it may or may not be enough what's enough in the $45,000, but based that, it's only less than a third of what was estimated that at a certain point in time, there will need to be supplemented. So, just two points, that the full one-third that you voted and asked them to deposit has not been deposited. And, but there is some funds, as you see in the account right now, and just kind of the board, the staff will keep the board apprised. But, you know, that money, especially with a 300-page or whatever it is, I don't know how many pages, stormwater report and that type of review is going to take some time. So, I just want to make sure the board was aware of this issue. There is no ability under the 40B regulations to object during the hearing process as to the cost of the peer review, only as to the qualifications of the peer reviewers, which they are all clearly qualified. So, I just wanted you to be aware, this is something that Mr. Vitale has been on top of, been very responsive, been trying to work with your peer reviewers to make sure they understand. They've been very responsive and being efficient. And I'm just concerned that it will become an issue if the funds are reduced over the next month.
I think I understand what you're saying. I know that I myself, excuse me? I know that I myself don't feel comfortable moving forward with this if we don't have the consult of peer reviewers to actually provide an independent review of this and actually represent us, the board, the town in general, so that we can pose these questions. These are very, very complex areas. It may not be complex for him, but it's not an area that I practice in. If we don't, personally, but I've got the members of the board here. I'll let them speak if they want to say anything. But I know that I myself would not feel comfortable going forward. And if we don't have the peer reviewers to do the work and actually provide us consult with this after questions are posed by the public, questions posed by the board, that I don't think we can move forward.
So, at this point, as I noted, I think you have a number there. It's, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. It's about $46,000. Is that right?
I see a balance here. I don't know exactly how the math works.
So, this is about, of the deposits that have been made to date into peer review, there's currently a balance of a little, about $46,500. You know, that's a fair amount of money to, for what the work that's being done now by Mr. Gabriel, by the traffic engineer, et cetera. But, as the bills come in on a monthly basis, it's going to start going down. So, at this point, I don't know if you want to give some direction, maybe to Mr. Vitale, who's managing this on behalf of the board? You know, or as to if the balance gets below a certain number, that the applicant is required to deposit more funds based on estimates that maybe Mr. Vitale gets from the peer reviewers as to the amount of work that they need to do to prepare for the next hearing. I just feel that the board, be given the responses that have been coming back from the applicant, that the staff would appreciate some direction from the board or authority as to requiring additional deposits as the money decreases.
Well, I obviously don't want to put the town in a position where we're going to be on the hook. The town's going to be on the hook for the fees that they incur as a result of the representation. This is something that, under the law, we're allowed to have, this level of representation.
Yes.
So, I know I myself, unless you guys want to chime in on this, Attorney Ume, is there anything you want to add?
I agree with you.
I won't move forward unless we have?
Well, I understand. Let's hear from me and from Attorney. Do you have something he would like to say?
So, I think there's been a little bit of a, I'm sure, fair-minded, but not quite an accurate representation of what we've done so far. So, we paid for traffic in full. We objected to the amount. It's more expensive than our original traffic site. We paid for it in full. We were asked to pay a third towards NICH's original proposal of somewhere between 90 and 100,000. We gave 30,000. We got, just got a revised proposal from STANTEC. We think it's excessive, but we're prepared to give some money towards that, to get them going, a sizable amount, a third perhaps of that as well. We're talking about that. We know that there's meetings coming up. We didn't say that we won't pay more. What we said was, we think that 30,000 is enough to get it done. If and when these funds start to get replenished, we're happy to replenish them as needed. We were asked to pay a third. We paid roughly a third. We paid 100% of traffic, and we're going to pay towards STANTEC.
All right. Well, we're always concerned that as we get towards the end, if things are not being paid for, then the town is left holding the bag. And I'm not going to be, you know, the captain of the ship in which that happens.
And I don't disagree with you one bit. We fully expect Mr. Vitale, if he's the one that's organizing it, to let us know when we're getting low and that an additional deposit is needed, and we'll get together as a group and make that deposit as needed.
So, do you think we need a vote so that we grant Mr. Vitale the authority to request the funds?
I think he has the authority.
Mr. Vitale would like to speak, if that's okay, sir. I would say if that's the case, then that changes kind of the, our understanding. I would just say that the communications that have come from the applicant and his council up to this date were not as clear as to their intentions. So, that's the reason we brought it up today. Sorry.
Good evening. Chris Vitale, Assistant Town Administrator. My recommendation, if that's the direction the board wants to go, is just set a clear dollar amount, just so the expectation is clear with all the parties involved. And then that way, I can make sure that we have the money when we need the money.
But I don't know, what you were asking, that we ask for all the money upfront?
You know, as our council suggested, you know, we do have funds available right now, which we can use to pay the bills as they're coming in, you know, monthly. Now, if the board, rather than, you know, requesting the additional third and then maybe doing a third later on, you know, if the board chooses to, we could set a minimum amount within the account. So, for example, 15,000. If we get to 15,000, you know, there's a certain dollar amount that they would need to replenish, to bring the account back to full. You know, that's one suggestion, but again, it's, you know, I just want to make sure that there's clear expectations with us.
I don't even know where they are in their services. If they've completed a third or already at two-thirds, I don't know.
We don't have invoices yet, so.
Excuse me, hold on. Excuse me, what did you say?
We don't know how much they've done either. I thought we asked for invoices.
There's only been one invoice, I think, paid to date, and you can, you can provide, well, you don't, that's because you don't pay them. Excuse me, Mr. Cusson. Excuse me.
Excuse me.
So, the invoices are not paid by the applicant. They're paid by the town, so therefore, they pay them on a timely basis. Copies will be provided to the applicant. My understanding in trying to prepare, kind of an understand where we were, is I just learned, I believe, from Michelle this week, that there was one invoice paid to date, and I'm sure she can share that. She has a copy or Mr. Vitale. Someone can share it with them. The other suggestion I would just say is maybe if the board would authorize Mr. Vitale, in consultation with the peer reviewers, that he check in with them and get, anticipate, you know, the work they're doing any given month to make sure that before they are undertaking that work, or if they can kind of estimate on a monthly basis what it's going to be, so that he can gauge before the invoices are coming in whether there's enough in the account. So, as long as Mr. Vitale is having the authority to do that.
I would think he'd have that discretion anyway, looking out for the town's best interest. Because it's not going to put us in a situation where the taxpayers are going to be responsible for paying these consultants.
So, that's, so we just wanted?
I would hope that that would be followed. If you need further direction, we can vote on basically granting you the authority to understand that as they incur services or services are rendered, that there's money to cover those services.
Yes.
That is being paid by the applicant into the account.
That's fair, and I'm certainly happy, you know, if the board, you know, trusts me to work on that, I will work in our best interest with our consultants.
And if we find out that the money's not there and the consultant has already expended slightly over that, then we're not going to move forward on the hearings until such time as they replenish the payment.
Yeah, so I will keep the board apprised, you know, of, you know, the balance, as well as if we need to get it replenished. Happy to do so.
Great.
And that's fine with us. And we're talking about the new STANTEC proposal because we want to understand it. There's some things getting scheduled, and we'll make a deposit towards STANTEC as well.
That's what I expected. Thank you. All right. So, now, if you can identify yourself again, please.
I will. Kate Dabney, 82 Fairway Drive. Sorry, this is sort of now ancient history. I just wanted to clarify that the current pond that exists is, was not actually pointed to, but it's where the duplex development is. And I just, saying they're going to fill it, does a duplex on top make a difference as far as the weight and whatnot of how it's going to deal with it? It's just important to know it's not a single-family house. It's where the duplexes are. I just wanted to make that point.
Okay.
Sorry, I think we're on schedule. Sorry, Michelle.
Now, we're back on schedule. Now, we're going to do some scheduling. So, where's our next date for this? And making sure that, obviously, the traffic consultants are going to be able to speak, and I don't think there's going to be too much more on that, but there's going to be some. And also, our peer reviewer on the? I have difficulty with that word.
Not consciously, not consciously.
All right, so December. So, what, December 4? So, does December 4 work for you, Mr. Farland? And also, Mr.?
Gabriel.
Mr. Gabriel. Would you be able, I know it's 1,300 pages, which I started looking at and said to myself, "My goodness." But do you think you'll be able to have a report for the peer review of the stormwater that they've provided?
By what date?
December 4.
Yes.
You will. Okay. Sure. Come right up.
Hopefully, it'll, Paul Cusson from Dolphic Associates.
Thank you.
Hopefully, it can be before, if the meeting's going to be December 4, we would like an opportunity to review that, hopefully, if he can get it before December 4, if that's a possibility. And also, if the board could authorize, and maybe you've done so already, for the two engineers to have conversations between themselves, answer questions and so forth between now and then.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you think you'd be able to have the report maybe a week or two prior to the December 4 date, so they have an opportunity to review it?
Yes, I can.
Excuse me? Two weeks is November 13? Yeah, well, we don't have to be strict. We're just saying roughly. No, not to present, just to have it so they can review it informally. You would exchange that between the experts, right? Okay. It's not an actual date. The meeting would be December 4 at 6 o'clock.
I think that's good.
So, just to recap, we're going to continue this meeting to December 4 at 6:00 PM here in this building. And it appears that we're going to have our peer reviewer, who is going to provide his opinion on the calculations that they've provided. And in addition to that, we're also going to have some additional information about the questions that were raised and suggestions that were made by our traffic consultant, and there's going to be a response to that. And there's going to be a response to that and maybe some adjustments to the numbers and the calculations of what the impacts are in traffic that we'll discuss on that evening as well. And we have a gentleman's understanding that the two experts will exchange information, at least the peer reviewers, roughly two weeks, I'm not going to hold them to a specific date, but roughly two weeks prior, so that they can have an ample opportunity to have the comments prepared there as well. And this only speeds things up, right? It only speeds things up.
And then just speaking of the timing, the hearing opened on August 27th. 180 days right now, if it's calculated, if it just stayed within that time period, the statutory time period, is February 23rd. You're going to already be in December. So hopefully, they could also be having the conversations on kind of the, the water, wastewater issues that those, because the, the more that can get done, then, you know, because those, those conversations have not happened yet.
Who's going to do water and sewer for the petitioner?
Are you doing that, Mr. Farland?
So, and you're going to be doing the peer review for water and sewer?
No, that's going to be, yeah, Mr. Darber with StanTech.
So he's not here yet, but hopefully they'll go, come into communication with one another.
Right. So I don't, I don't mean, I don't know if that's all going to be, if that's going to be too much to do on the 4th, but I just wanted to keep, keep you aware of the...
I'm not thinking about putting it on the 4th. I'm thinking that they can have some dialogue between them.
And the town.
And the town, necessary to determine, I'm sure DPW is going to be part of this as well.
Yep.
And that they can then come up with whatever the issues or the sticking issues are, and we'll have those discussed and allow people in the public to ask any questions.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could request that Mr. Barber schedules that meeting for one day next week with StanTech?
I can't speak for him unless he's here. Oh, he's here. Mr. Barber, if you'd come up, please.
Excuse my voice.
Looks like we're all a little under the weather.
Tim Barber, DPW Director. Yeah, Mr. Farland, I can, I can look to schedule that meeting next week. It may have to be remote, after, I'll discuss with the consultant.
Yeah, that's fine.
So have we formally engaged the gentleman from StanTech for water and sewer?
Yes.
We have. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to make a motion? Okay.